Hi, everyone. Kelly Beatty coming to you live from the Chelmsford Senior Center where we take up session two of the annual town meeting, spring edition. And for those of you who were with us on Monday night, you know that the going was a little bit slow. We got through four articles on a warrant that has 34 articles. We did manage to get through the annual budget for the town. And there is so much to talk about, both tonight, that night, and the coming nights, that there have been not one, but two, and I think there's going to be a third handout for all of the town meeting reps. But I will tell you that we've approved a budget for the coming fiscal year in the amount of $110.8 million. That was one of the first articles. We also got within that, and part of the reason that that took so long was a fairly protracted debate about the amount of money paid to Neshoba Valley Technical High School always seems to come up. There were a lot of pointed questions for the Neshoba Tech representatives and an outright call for, to make sure that at the next town meeting when this comes up again-
Pay attention. This is the two-minute warning.
-that we have the superintendent, Mrs. Klimkowitz, to show up and make that presentation herself. In any case, that is not to suggest in any way, shape, or form that this is going to be a boring evening. We have many, many articles still coming down. You can look forward. The first few are going to be pretty straightforward, but Article 8 has to do with collective bargaining agreements. These are the contracts with the town unions, and that remains to be sorted out. And also Article 10, which will be the capital planning budget in the amount of about $3.3 million. Then coming up later, we have a series of articles involving the conservation, sorry, the CPC, the Conservation Commission, that will be spending a significant amount of money on things such as turf field for the middle school-
Will all the official school committee, selectmen, etc., please take his seats?
Also, Article 21 will deal with the Oak Hill Conservation Land. If you've been following the news, that's been very controversial. Articles 24 and 25 deal with zoning for a medical marijuana facilities here in the town of Chelmsford. Conversely, Article 26 will seek to repeal the billboard zones that were approved a couple of years ago, and you may know that billboards are not going to be allowed here in Chelmsford. And then finally, Articles 32 through 34 are citizen petitions brought to try to make the town a little bit more responsive and transparent than it has been, at least in the eyes of the petitioners. We are not going to get through all 34 warrant articles tonight. DeFreitas, Dick DeFreitas, our moderator, has suggested to me that we might get through 19 tonight. I predict that we're going to be here quite late tonight with an eye toward getting half of them done so that we can finish up next Monday night.
I'd like to welcome everybody back to session two of the spring town meeting. I want to point out the fire exits, the two on the left and right that are up front and the two that are about 60 percent back towards the entrance. Early adjournment last session means we still have a lot of work to do on some very important articles. So tonight, I will dispense with the introduction of officials. So let's go right to the pledge of allegiance. My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I need to see if we have a quorum, so everybody take your clickers and hit 1, 2, or 3.
What you're seeing here is a test of the town meeting's new electronic voting system. It works very well when it works. We had a few glitches on Monday night, but it seems to be up and running tonight. This allows each of the town meeting reps to vote, and the tally is recorded automatically. It also very obviously shows who is not yet here this evening.
122. We have 122. 82 is a quorum. I ask all the presenters tonight to be brief, direct, and to the point. No long-winded presentations. Also, there will be no planned break at 9:30. We're all here to vote on the motions presented and not to use the question-and-answer period to score points. Again, the question-and-answer period is a personal thing. You need an answer for something you don't know. If you know the answer, don't ask it. It's not meant to be a contest between the moderator and town meeting members. Which reminds me, there was this big ship in the North Atlantic cruising on a foggy night, and the captain on a bridge sees a small light forward, and he tells his signalman, "Signal that light that they must veer 10 degrees to the north." So the signalman signals, back comes another signal, and the captain says, "What did they say?" They said, "You must veer 10 degrees to the south."
Is this going on the record, Mr. Moderator?
And the captain responds, "This is the Joseph P. Kennedy Naval Destroyer. You must veer 10 degrees to the north." Back comes the signal, "With all due respect, you must veer 10 degrees to the south." Captain says, "This is Captain Harold H. Sullivan on the USS Joseph P. Kennedy. You must immediately veer 10 degrees to the north." The answer comes back, "This is Ensign 4th Class Corey R. DeFreitas, and this is the U.S. Naval Station Lighthouse on the Greenland coast." That's how I feel during this question-and-answer period. Do not abuse the question-and-answer period. You basically should come in here knowing how you're going to vote, so there should be a few number that just needs an extra push. I will adhere to the two-question rule tonight. I will not let it go on. And as we did last session, you may ask the presenter directly during the Q&amp;A period. However, during debate, you must go through the moderator if you wish to ask someone a question. If you wish to ask a town official a question during question-and-answer, you must go through the moderator. But as long as you're talking to the presenter, you have free rein. And lastly, video and print media shall not interfere with the town meeting process and shall be unobtrusive, or they will once again be relegated to sit down back. Enough said. Please turn off all cell phones. And Article 5.
Someone going to waive the reading or the motion?
Oh, I have a motion. I have a standing motion that I'll use all night when necessary to waive the reading. Please raise your tickets, all those in favor. Motion passes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Article 5 is the vote to appropriate the sewer enterprise fund for the upcoming fiscal year. As you can see in the display, the sewer enterprise budget is increasing by 1.52 percent for the upcoming fiscal year. As we all know, the sewer enterprise is now in full operation with the townwide being sewered. We came off of a year of 0 percent change in sewer rates. We anticipate this year's rates will not exceed 2 percent. We just received data for the 2012 tie-in bond Massachusetts sewer rate survey. The typical homeowner sewer cost for a household in the Commonwealth is $690, and Chelmsford is $314, Boric is $328, Drake it's $520, and Tewksbury is $755. So I'd ask your approval to continue and over the year of the sewer enterprise fund.
Question and answer. Seeing no questions?
Mr. Moderator, through you, I'd like to ask the town manager, are we collecting more money than what we need at this point? Could we be looking at a decrease? Because over the years, we have had increases. Is there an excess in the enterprise account?
There is, I don't believe there's an excess. We have a sewer enterprise free cash of about $1.2 million. That is the target that the town established in terms of having a reserve fund to meet the sewer enterprise needs. As we said, we came off of a year of no increase. We anticipate a rate increase of less than 2 percent this year. So no, we're not looking for any, raising any additional revenue at this time.
My second question is, can the money in the 1.2 that you discussed in the stabilization, or whatever you called it, can that be used only for sewer-related things or for anything?
No. The sewer enterprise fund is a standalone accounting system. Money for the sewer revenue goes into the revenues, into the fund, and the expenses are limited. So no, it can only be used for sewer-related expenditures. Cannot be used for anything else.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no more questions, let's go to recommendations. Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Board of Selectmen.
Board of Selectmen also recommends approval.
Not being a school issue, there is no school recommendation. We're now open for debate, and please use the Pro and Con microphones. Seeing no one queued up for debate, we'll go to the vote. Press 1 for yea, 2 for no, and go. Yea, no, nays, and no abstentions. It's unanimous. Article 6. Town Manager Paul Cohen moves that the town appropriate $15,000 in expenses to operate the golf course enterprise for fiscal year 2014, and that $15,000 be raised from the golf course enterprise revenues. Mr. Town Manager.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Similar to the sewer enterprise, the golf course enterprise means all the revenue from the golf course and expenses stay in this fund. We have a professional golf course management company continuing to operate the country club. Because of the loss of the function room, this year's enterprise fund budget is reduced by $15,000. So we anticipate it'll be at this level, and then if later on, the town decides to return that, then subsequent fiscal year, we'd return to the normal funding level. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Any questions?
Beth Logan, Precinct 3. How much is in the fund from last year that was unused?
I think we have a balance of about, yeah, we just finished the fund up, so it was really in the nominal numbers in terms of a small amount, less than $1,000. I was going to say 900, but Gary's telling me it's even less than that at this point. Basically, remember, this is the money that goes into maintaining the greens, the irrigation system, repairs to the function room, pro shop, and so forth. And so basically, we're expending the money into the course every year, and again, it's limited, so we use no tax revenue to support the golf course operations.
Okay, so that, basically, in this case, the goal is to keep expenses below revenues?
Yes. And if you recall, at the last meeting, the last session, we had to appropriate money because of the costs we incurred for the demolition of the function room. So again, we've got nothing left in that fund. On a typical year, we have around $30,000 or so that comes in, you know, to support the golf course operations.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing no one else queued up for questions, let's go to recommendations. Fincom.
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Selectmen.
Board of Selectmen recommends approval.
It's not a school issue, so we'll go right to debate. Seeing no one queued up for debate, we'll go right to the vote. All those in favor, please click 1. Opposed, 2. The votes, 138 in favor, no nays, no abstentions. It's unanimous. Article 7. Town Manager Paul Cohen moves that the town raise and appropriate $400,000 to be used as a reserve fund at the discretion of the Finance Committee for fiscal year 2014, as provided in the General Laws, Chapter 40, Section 6. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Once again, this is a fund that's held outside of town meeting by the Finance Committee to provide for extraordinary unforeseen expenditures. Again, we're asking the same amount as we've asked in the past few fiscal years of $400,000. At that point, it represents about 0.36 percent of our town's budget.
Any questions?
Bob Joyce, Precinct 1. Over the past five years, what have we spent out of this account? I know earlier in the town meeting, we appropriated some money, which I spoke against because I didn't feel it was something that was-
Question, Mr. Joyce, is what have you spent?
Yeah, okay. All right. What have we spent in the past five years?
I don't have the data for the last five years expenditures in the funds. I think it has varied year to year. But I'm looking at Mary Franz, and Mary's been there the last five years with me, and I just don't have it offhand. I'm sorry. If you'd sent me that ahead of time, I could have gotten that data for you.
Okay. All right, I'll wait till the next part.
Seeing no one else queued up for questions, we have recommendations. Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Selectmen.
Board of Selectmen recommends approval.
Debate.
Bob Joyce, Precinct 1. For many years, this account was funded with $150,000, and even at that, we very infrequently used it. What we saw earlier in last week, this week, when we had our first session, was redirection of that money to pay for a project. And I think that part of the criteria is that it's something that happens that you couldn't plan for. So I think we should go back to $200,000, because that's $200,000 less that gets appropriated and charged to the taxpayers. And if we don't, if we have a major catastrophe, which we haven't had, like a roof blow-off or something like that, then we could take action at that point. But I think $400,000 is too much. Once it's appropriated, it goes into our taxes, and then the manager can come back the subsequent year and say, "We didn't spend it, so I'm going to use this, this money to do something." So I would like to make a motion to amend the article.
You have it in writing?
No, I will put it in writing. Amend it to $200,000.
Bob Joyce, as you might know-
You fell off the phone?
...ran for selectman this past election season, and one of his, planks of his campaign was that tax relief should be very high on the list of priorities for the town's officials. And both on Monday night and you see here tonight, he is taking opportunities to try to find ways to reduce the overall size of the budget to reduce the burden on the taxpayers. His point that the stabilization fund, I'm sorry, this is the wrong word, this Finance Committee Fund, Emergency Fund, is correct in that it does get appropriated to the tax base. However, if the money is not spent, it ends up at the end of the year as free cash, and that either goes to offset debts that we have, or gets rolled over into the stabilization fund, which is the town's main rainy day fund, which amounts to up to upwards of 10 percent of the town's annual budget. Millions of dollars, not just a few hundred thousand. One of the other overarching issues that came to my-
We have an amendment to Article 7 that changed the amount from $400,000 to $200,000. We are now debating the amendment. Seeing no one queued up for debate, we will vote. Oh, wait a minute. Do we have a recommendation from the Finance Committee?
Amendment?
We have to vote on that. We have to vote on that.
We'll go right to the vote. All those in favor of the amendment to change it from $400,000 to $200,000, vote yes. If you want to leave it at 400, vote no.
As I was saying, as you see the vote come in here, there's the additional issue that the town has an unfunded mandate for its retirement accounts, and Town Manager Paul Cohen has started the process of getting money funneled toward that to reduce that liability in the years going forward. So a lot of what would be free cash at the end of the year might well be targeted for that fund as well. You see that there is a pretty overwhelming nay vote on this amendment proposed by Robert Joyce, and so we'll proceed directly to the main article.
There are 34 yeas. 101 nays, three abstentions. The amendment fails. We're back to the main motion. Any more debate on a main motion? Seeing none, we'll vote on a main motion. Okay, side voting. Article 8. Town Manager Paul Cohen moves that the town postpone the consideration of Article 8 until after the consideration of Article 34.
Article 8 being the article about the collective bargaining agreements, and Article 34 is a citizen's petition referring to a code of ethics for town.
I don't believe this requires any recommendations. So since electronics is not up there, let's vote by ticket. All those in favor of postponing this after Article 34, raise your ticket. Opposed? I have a standing motion to waive the reading of the article. Article 9. Mr. Manager.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Moderator. This is the annual authorization of revolving funds for the issue of council on aging, senior trips, respite care, seal of weights and measures, police department, turn-in of cruiser equipment, and also the town clerk dog pound fees. In essence, what happens is the money for those are allowed to be expended for those purposes. Again, this article has been unchanged, at least for a decade.
Seeing no questions, does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Board of Selectmen.
Board of Selectmen recommends approval.
Seeing no debate, we'll vote on this one. Are we ready in the electronics gallery?
You can probably already tell that the pace of the evening is brisk, in contrast to what we had last Monday night. This is obviously, Moderator DeFreitas is trying to keep things moving quickly so we can get through as many of these warrant articles as possible. Again, with an eye toward keeping the town meeting to only three sessions that is continuing and concluding next Monday night.
We have 140 yeas, two abstentions. I have an amendment. Well, first of all, I have a motion to waive the reading of Article 10. All those in favor? I have a motion, an amendment, to move to divide the question for purposes of questions or discussion. What that means is I will have to go through every line for you to vote on. So-
Who made the motion?
Motion was made by Bob Joyce. There any debate on this?
Mr. Moderator, Bob Joyce, Precinct 1. The reason I made this motion is because I've heard a lot of people say that they would like to discuss certain things on it. And in the past, we've kind of like been faced with voting in all but nothing type of thing. Way back when we started elected town meeting, we used to go through them individually. And what my intent is, is that we would go through each section. In other words, if the school has one, school technology has another one, fire has one, highway has one. If there's two in there, that's fine, we can discuss them both. But that was my reason, so we could have some discussion about some of the items. The Capital Planning Committee has meetings, my understanding is every two weeks, on Fridays during a certain period of time at 7:30 in the morning. And it's certainly not a good time for people who have a job to go to a meeting at that time. So I can't attend those meetings. And so that's why I made the motion. Thank you.
Any other debate?
Yeah, Mr. Moderator, the Capital Plan Budget is not only considered by the Capital Planning Committee, it's also considered by the Board of Selectmen and by the Finance Committee. And we do this with the committee in a comprehensive manner. If a member wishes to amend the capital budget, all they would have to do is get up and make an amendment to strike an article or change a funding portion. So I just-
So, I just wanted to point out that there has been ample opportunities for people to speak to the capital budget.
Yes, Glenn Thorne, Precinct 5. I agree with what the Town Manager just said. I can only imagine a debate on every single line item in here. I think there's going to be ample opportunity to discuss the line item of concern that may, you know, topple the entire capital planning budget. But as I look at the members of the Capital Planning Committee and the fact that it's gone through reviews by a number of boards in town, I think the package is a good package. If there are questions to be asked, let them be asked. If they're serious enough, we'll vault the entire thing down and then break it apart. But I don't want to do that now.
Mr. Moderator, Bob Joyce, Precinct 1. It looks like there's a total of about six or seven headings here. It's not like we're going to be here all night discussing them.
Okay, we're going to vote on the amendment. All those in favor of dividing the question on Article 10, if you're in favor of it, I have to go through the line items, vote yes. If you're against dividing and you want to vote on it as is, vote no. The yeses are 27, the nays are 112, abstention 3. The amendment fails. We're now on the main article.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'd like to call upon John Suzer, our Finance Director. John is the Chair of the Capital Plan Committee and I'd ask him to present this article.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. The capital planning, I'd like to talk a little bit about the process. It's an ongoing process that begins each year in the early fall and department heads are asked to update and submit their five-year capital plans annually. And the Capital Planning Committee meets seasonally, usually in months of November and December, and these are public meetings. The committee includes the following members. Dennis Bach, citizen member. Carmen Cristiano, representative from the Board of Library Trustees. Nick DeSilvio, representing the School Committee. John Morrison, representing, as a citizen, excuse me. Roy Trebo, representing the Finance Committee. And Darlene Lucio, our Town Accountant. The Capital Planning Committee holds public hearings, reviews all of the requests in detail, and works in cooperation with the Town Manager to develop an annual capital budget each year. The Capital Planning Committee also receives recommendations on the technology projects from a committee called the IT Capital Advisory Committee. And just to run through the people that are involved in the IT Capital Planning Committee, Melissa Andrews is a citizen member, Gregory Piper is a citizen member, Anne Marie Fiori, our Director of School Technology, Ted Luter, our IT Director from the general government side, Kathleen McWilliams, our School Business Manager. And I'd point out that both of the citizen members on the IT Capital Advisory Committee, their careers are in the technology field. So, what this does is this gives us a nice blend of both private and public technology experience on the committee. So, the point of this is that for all of the technology requests that you see here, those actually undergo two levels of review before we bring them forward. This year, the Capital Planning Committee took a look at the overall funding level and as you'll see on the slide here, the capital budget's been funded at about $2.5 million for just about a decade now, and you can see the actual numbers there. Back in fiscal year 2002, $2.5 million represented about 3.2% of our town's general operating budget. With the effects of inflation over time, the 2.5 funding level by fiscal year 12 declined to just under 2.5% of our town's operating budget. Now, if you're one of those people that finds tables and numbers confusing, this slide, this graph has the same data and this shows you, and you can clearly see the downward trend over time. And it's important to note that the committee not only looks at developing a capital budget for one year, but we actually look out over five years because we need to always see what's in the pipeline. And I'd like to draw a town meeting's attention to page H19 in the Spiral Bound Budget Manual. And what you'll see there is that that's a summary of all the capital requests that we have in the pipeline. And you'll see that after fiscal year 14 is funded, we still have a little over $19 million of projects for the next four years. So, taking these factors into consideration, the Capital Planning Committee voted to recommend a capital investment of $3.35 million for fiscal year 14. And I'd just like to run through those areas with you. About 25% is devoted to technology, $825,000. Just under $1.5 million, or 45% of the plan, is devoted to public facilities. $575,000, or about 17%, is devoted to public works. And then finally, 13% of $460,000 is devoted to public safety in the Fire Department. And then just to go through these items with you, just briefly, general government technology is $175,000. And you'll have, and all of these projects you'll know are listed on page H3 of the same book and all of the detailed information is there for you. About $460,000, as we said, is devoted to public safety. $575,000 for public works, which includes traditional infrastructure projects like drainage, sidewalk construction, roadway improvements. This year, a $25,000 tractor and backhoe replacement for the Cemetery Department. For facilities, for general government facilities, a fire suppression system is proposed for the Town Office Building. Gymnasium upgrades are proposed for the Byham and Harrington Schools. At McCarthy Middle School, two significant facilities projects, the replacement of the track and plumbing upgrades, all of the school facilities projects total just under $1.2 million. And then the last component, school technology. Many of these are multi-year projects, you've seen them before, these are the next phases of them. And all of the school projects total $650,000. And that includes the interactive whiteboards, wireless, the continued modernization of the phone system, the replacement of computers in the high school graphics lab, and the ongoing installation of security cameras at elementary schools. And then finally, this last slide really underscores the importance of us continuing to invest adequate amounts of capital on public buildings and facilities. If you look at this slide, this shows all of the ages of all of the buildings and public facilities in town. And you'll see that with the exception of the Adams Library addition, the police station, the Center School renovation, and the recent renovation of two historic town halls, the majority of all of the other buildings on this list were constructed in the 1960s and early 1970s, and some earlier than that. And this is back, of course, when the town experienced its most rapid growth in population. Many of us in this room, myself included, still think of the high school on Richardson Road as our new high school. In reality, the building is nearly now 40 years old. And as our buildings age, it's important that we continue to make improvements in these facilities so that they'll continue to meet the town's needs in the years ahead. And just to mention, the total of all of the projects total $3,353,545. And as you note in the wording of the article, we're also, I just want to point out, we're applying what's called recaptured funds, which are funds left over from prior year projects that have now been completed, but there are balances in those accounts. We have $298,000 from two projects that were bonded, as well as $56,737 from a variety of miscellaneous smaller projects. So, the actual amount that the town will be borrowing in this case will be $2,998,808. So, it'll be just under $3 million.
Do we have any questions?
Turn, Paul, Precinct 5. Mr. Suzer, I noticed you had mentioned some improvements in the track for McCarthy School. Would that have any overlap of any play in with the, if we were to pass the tariff later on?
No, the track is actually, it's an important part, it's going to be done in conjunction with that project. But we, the Capital Planning Committee looked at that and the surface of the track is in such poor condition that one of the considerations was that it can no longer be, they can't host track meets there right now and the surface is deteriorated. So, whether or not the Fields Project passes, the track still needs to be renovated.
Thank you.
Next.
Brian Latina, Precinct 4. I kind of have a multiple-part question, actually two, regarding the security cameras and then the track. And my question is, we're spending $95,000 with this capital budget related to security cameras, but I see out-years, 2014, 15, 16, 17, with more camera purchases. For the same amount of money, we're also this year taking care of, putting a rubberized track into McCarthy. The camera question is, and I hate talking about security in public, but I'm assuming the police are watching these cameras at the schools? Or are the cameras designed to simply protect property rather than the children? And shouldn't we be spending that money to protect, if it's the children, to protect the children now and maybe put off the track?
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to ask Anne Marie Fiori, Director of School Technology, to answer that question.
And if I may, I'm sensitive about security, so please don't give us too much information, it would hurt your security.
Coming up this year for capital is, two of the schools are going to be outfitted with security cameras, which are exterior cameras that surveil the outside of the buildings. This is for security of the kids, I'm not going to talk about exactly where they're And each year going forward, we're doing more until all the schools are complete.
And part of my question is, relative to the schools, each one of our schools has an adequate amount of security to offset paying for a track instead of proper security or reasonable security now?
I mean, I think that answer really comes from the School Committee. What we do is we receive a request for capital technology from the School Committee. They laid out that five-year plan. We are reluctant to step on that plan and so we reviewed it, we approved it. So, I don't know if anybody from the School Committee or Superintendent would like to answer that question.
He wants to know why you want to involve the school cameras right now instead of the track.
Just two schools and he wants to know why are we paying it for the same year as the track.
Why are we doing the track instead of finishing the track?
Sorry, Brian, I was just going to clarify, could you repeat the question, please?
The question is, we have about five years at $95,000 in the outgoing budget. This is page H36 in the large purple or blue book. And that, to me, says we're doing separate schools over some, many years of time.
Yes.
And at the same time, we're spending about that total amount of dollars on a rubberized track, which isn't security-related. And I'm concerned as a parent, and given all the circumstances of the schools and all, does this $195,000 amount cover all of our kids? Or is it just simply watching parking lots and we look at a tape later on?
Well, essentially, what we've been doing with security for our schools, Brian, has started, you know, essentially a decade ago. So, this is not the one-shot deal in terms of making sure that our schools are secure. We've put a camera system in place that we already have cameras existing in a few buildings, interior and exterior. The cameras we're talking about now, as Anne Marie indicated, are exterior in nature. And essentially, what we look at is we look at the schools, you know, essentially which are most vulnerable in terms of isolation in geographic area. We're comfortable with the plan that we have in place. We're 100% comfortable in terms of making sure that our kids are safe during the school day and making sure that, you know, the property has proper surveillance afterwards. You know, given the nature of some of the vandalism we've had in the past, you know, South Row School Playground comes to mind.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. And like I said, I don't want to go too far into security.
Thank you. Next.
Second question is-
That was about three questions that you asked.
It was one question around the whole piece of security with our school budget in the capital channel. The second question was Fire Department trucks, how many do we have? We're replacing two in the next two years. And I'll step aside.
Yep. Thank you. We're going to ask Chief Curran to come up and address the issue regarding fire apparatus because there seems to be some misconception being advanced out there that we're buying a truck to serve as a backup engine. And that's certainly not the case. And I'll ask the chief to explain the assignment of fire apparatus.
Currently, we have five engines. That's one in each station. We have five stations. Does that answer your question?
No.
Mr. Joyce.
Bob Joyce, I don't think that does answer his question because-
Ask your question.
What we're asked to replace here is Engine E7, which is a reserve truck. And what I'd like to find out is, is it going to replace one of the five? And then one of those five becomes a reserve truck? And if so, which one is it?
Part of your answer is correct. We are replacing Engine 7, that will be traded in when we purchase a new truck. New truck takes about a year, maybe even 18 months to build. And at this point, we don't know which truck that that's going to replace. The one that's most needed will be replaced that probably puts the best reserve in place.
One more.
Okay. My second question is around the track. And this one is for the manager. How long has the track, because we can't see backwards on the report you have, how long has that track been in the queue? It's been in one year, two years, five years?
It has periodically appeared in the capital plan. I believe the last time it was in there was two years ago. And again, why you say, well, why do things appear and don't appear? The answer is, is we take the queue from the School Committee and I think what happens is the School Committee membership changes over years and sometimes their policy and technology and other directions change. And so, the plans vary with the direction from the School Committee.
Can I ask a follow-up to that?
No.
No, good. Thank you.
Maria Carafellis, Precinct 2. This is actually for the technology, Anne Maria. My question's regarding the VoIP phones. My assumption is that you went out to for bids. Did you go out for bid on the VoIP phone system?
We've been using the same vendor. We bid the project at the beginning. DSCI is our vendor and we're continuing on with that since the beginning, two or three years ago.
Okay, so this $195,000 is, that's for the initial setup and getting new phones and all the phones? Am I correct?
The $195 is for the Chelmsford High School. So far, we've completed Byham, South Row, Central Office, Parker, Westlands, Harrington, and Center. This year is Chelmsford High School. And I just want to point out that it's not only phones, it's the power over ethernet switches that power those phones. So, that $195 is a combined total for both of those items. And in a building as large as Chelmsford High School, square footage, the price is obviously more than it is for the smaller elementary schools and middles.
Thank you.
I'm going to the back of the line. I'm going to the back of the line.
Next.
Hi, Laura Merrill, District 2, also for the technology director. This one is about the GIS-based permit software. I work in software implementation, and $85,000 seems like a lot of money to implement a piece of software that does one function, so I just wanted...
Please ask a question and not make...
I'm explaining myself. Thank you. So I just want to know, it was explained in the meeting that it did one function. I could order my permits online. And so I just wanted to get a better understanding of the software's capabilities for this cost.
Basically, it's a comprehensive permitting system that we would use town-wide and all the general government of the town. Why we use the word GIS-based is basically, the GIS component is a clear identifier for every property in the community. So therefore, one could lock in on the GIS-based system for, let's say, MapLock, and partner for XYZ Main Street. And then therefore, that would tie into the assessors' office, the conservation, planning board, you know, dog license, you know, you can just go on and on down through the whole system. So what it is, it's a coordinated system that can tie everything across the community. And this is a vendor off of the state bid contract. What we've seen is this system deployed in other Massachusetts communities such as Peabody and Andover and so forth, and Acton. And basically, it's a comprehensive system. And therefore, yes, it would allow some technologies such as people to access, pay fees, and do other things remotely. But the whole idea is, is that basically it allows us to be business-friendly, user-friendly, so that one can take care of the transactions in a coordinated manner, as opposed to having somebody now run across literally by foot the different buildings of the town trying to get a sign-off for a liquor license or that type of thing. This is basically a comprehensive coordinated system. And like I said, the reviews that we're getting from other communities that have implemented the system are very favorable.
Okay, and then one more question on, when I was at Town Hall signing up to become a town rep about two years ago, there was a really interesting software system that they were just implementing then. And how is this new software going to interact with that, which had all of our names and properties and town bills already together?
Well, we've got to understand that there are some issues of security that we won't tie into. So if you're registering as a voter, you know, you're not going to be into the system because we don't...
I think this was town that had all my bills and everything?
Save it for debate.
I would basically say, you know, there are certain issues that we don't want to tie into the system, but it will have your assessment information, basically information that's available in public databases. It won't have privileged information, so it'll all be coordinated and tied in together.
So it will be coordinated with the new software that you implemented a couple of years ago?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Karen DiNata, Precinct 8. Question on security, because I'm also very concerned about the security in the schools. Are there any state or federal grants available or anything to help us out with the cost of these? And also, I didn't know if we might be partnering with any of the corporations, the big, large corporations in town, to see if they will help partner in funding the security in the schools?
There aren't a lot of grants available, although we do continually look on a, you know, every few months we go through to make sure. But with the security cameras, we are partnering with the town and going in on the system that they use at the police station. They're really our partner on this.
But have we reached out to the companies in town? We have a lot of large corporations out there who, you know, they make donations. They're willing to, sometimes they'll, you know, donate a system if we beta-site it or something, or, I didn't know if we've reached out to any of them to help fund for the securities in the schools. Same thing on technology. I mean, a lot of technology companies are willing to, you know, donate different technological things, laptops, computers. So are we reaching out to the community that way?
Yes, absolutely. The technology department on the school side takes in many, many, many donations throughout the school year. With the security cameras, we need to keep it all the same system.
Right.
And so all the equipment has to be the same, so we really need to proceed with that same vendor.
Okay, but if we could even use money, financial donations with that?
That was two, Karen. Thank you. Save it for debate. See, no more questions? Recommendations from the finance committee?
Finance committee recommends approval.
Selectmen?
Board of selectmen recommends approval.
School committee?
Once again, the school committee has not taken a position on the entire warrant article, but we do recommend the school facility subtotal of $1,193,545 and the school technology subtotal of $650,000.
We're in a debate section. And please use the pro and con microphones.
Does the con mean I have to vote against it?
Means you're speaking against it.
No, I'm going to follow up with a question that I couldn't get answered the first time.
That's fine.
Okay.
Who do you want to ask it of?
I guess I'll ask the manager, and he can send it to whoever he wants. As far as the track goes, the $575,000 for the track, did we look at other options? This is a turf track or artificial track. Did we look at being able to do the project as a regular, a regular track? There are still tracks like that around. Not everybody has rubberized tracks.
Yes, that particular track is not around anymore and cannot be around. It's an illegal track to be built today. The track that we're looking at is exactly the same track that's up on a Carson now, which is basically the standard track that's being put in around the country for high schools and schools around.
Brian Latina, Precinct 4. I'm very concerned about the fact that we're spending money on a track rather than the security of the kids in the elementary school. And the thing that struck me was, if you have a first grader at one of the elementary schools that doesn't have a $95,000, I guess that's the going price for a security camera, if you have a first grader there, they're going to get all the way through that elementary school, one of them, without the security cameras that everyone is scrambling right now to put in. I'm realistic. I do recognize that a camera does not protect anyone. The camera certainly allows you to figure out what happened after the fact. And I believe our town's relatively safe. I believe we're very secure in our school systems. You can't get in the front door if you try to shake the door with your hand. But we need to look at the priorities, and I think we need to look at the possibility of speeding up these cameras to at least try to secure all of our schools equally, so that that first grader, when they're in second and third grade, have the same security system as a newer school happens to already have. Second, and no, you don't need to comment on that, I'm also very concerned about telling too much about our security systems. Second question is, these fire engines are very expensive, almost half a million dollars. The last time we had one renovated, I understood that we actually sent it over to China to have it done instead of the US. Not true? Not true. I'm hopeful that we're buying American. I do see that we have a couple on the, we have another one next year that will be replaced as well, if I read the numbers correctly. If we have five stations and five engines, do we also have five reserve engines? We do not. We have two reserve engines. And that's sufficient to cover all the tall buildings we're building and apartment complexes and all. We had a very serious fire, and I know our folks got in there quick, but again, we're getting bigger, taller, and I want to make sure this is an adequate piece of equipment that we're buying.
This is a pumper, it's not a ladder, so it replaces obviously another pumper. The ladder truck will be coming up at a future time for replacement, so.
And you're comfortable getting a pumper instead of a quint like we did in the past?
Well, if one of these trucks either breaks down or has to come out of service for routine maintenance, and we don't have reserve to put in that building, then the station closes.
And in the past, we also had a request from Town Meeting floor that we give Town Meeting the number of hours on a vehicle, on the trucks. Trucks do not have a lifetime based on years and miles. They have a lifetime based on the number of hours, and that's generally between maintenance. Do you have a sense in this particular case of how many hours this engine has on it, or is that even a fire engine kind of a figure?
The newer trucks have hour meters on them, the older trucks do not. This truck has well over 100,000 miles on it. And it was refurbished 15 years ago, but not in China.
Please remember that if you want to talk to the presenter, because he's, they're supposed to be away from the podium during debate, you have to go through the moderator. This is not the question-and-answer period, this is debate.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes.
Bill Griffin, Precinct 9. I'd like to speak in favor of the article, in particular, the purchase of the emergency apparatus. Chief Curran, a year ago, we all applauded his desire to stay and see the new station through to help outfit our town. He's very modest in his description of how the apparatus serves this town. I'd remind folks that what we're doing here is nothing different than we ask what our government to do with our frontline aircraft and naval ships and things like that. This truck started out as a frontline engine. It was Engine 1 at one time. It's gone through a service life extension and refurbishment. It is now a reserve truck. It is part of a concise plan to keep our apparatus in response up. One of the things that this truck has had to do is fill in a role, as well as the other reserve truck, because our current frontline apparatus, Engine 1, the combination pump and ladder, frequently goes out of service. And part of that is the customization that was required for that truck to fit in that very small fire station in the center of town. We have taken steps to eliminate that as a problem by procuring a properly-sized station in order to get standard apparatus. The truck next year purportedly will be a standard ladder truck, and it won't have to come out of service. The truck that is out of service now, when it goes down, you essentially lose a ladder truck and a pump. You lose two trucks. The chief's done a very good job of playing chess with the equipment that's out there. This truck's been extended as long as it can. Please make the appropriate purchase this year and next. Thank you.
Thank you. I urge the presenters to not stand behind the podium. You're not involved in a debate unless you're asked specifically. Yes?
Laura Merrill, District 2. I question, I guess, regarding the track. Since there isn't a middle school track team, who is...
Excuse me, who do you want to ask a question of?
We're in discussion. We're in debate. We're in debate, right?
Yes.
So...
But you want to ask a question. Who do you want to ask it of?
Whoever would be most knowledgeable about the track. Since there is not a middle school track team, who do you anticipate will be utilizing the track for the majority of the time?
Through you, Mr. Moderator. I think to answer the question, the majority of the time, I think it's going to be used by the community. We're, one, and myself included, can't go by there, and it's really, the McCarthy complex there is heavily utilized by people in the community for walking and other activities. If we do have this track, in addition to the, you know, we anticipate that we could have track meets and regional tournaments and other activities at this complex. But I think the majority of the usage would be used by the community. The problem with it now is it has poor drainage and uneven surface, and it really, it's a misnomer to be a track. It's actually a cinder path right now. And so what we're proposing to do is put it in as a track facility, which I think you'll get mostly community usage from, to be honest.
And it would be just like the track down the street at the high school?
Yes.
So do people use that one as much?
Yeah, I don't recall ever seeing a non-rubberized track built in the last decade. So that, yes, it would be that type of surface that you'd see at the Carson track, yes.
Okay, then I guess I would have to say that I would agree with the previous speaker saying I would wish the money would go to the security cameras instead. Thank you.
Any more debate?
Jeff Hardy, Precinct 6. Since everybody wants to focus on this track, I can tell you, many people in town, including members of my family, have come up to me to ask me what the status was with that track, because they utilized it quite a bit, enjoyed it. It has now become unsafe. Somebody gets hurt out there, the town's up for a lawsuit. We talk about security problems, we also have to protect ourselves. This is a great utilized piece of equipment, for lack of a better term, in this town. I know a lot of people in the community are very comfortable going over there and using it, and I hope that people will vote for this project as well as the others.
Thank you. Anyone else up for debate?
Just for a point of information, that the middle school, I guess they don't have a track team per se, but they, both middle schools have track after-school clubs, so there is running with both middle schools.
Mr. Moderator, Peter Clank, Precinct 3. Not so much an issue with the dollar allocations, but a question to whomever can answer it as we continue to deploy cameras around the town and public spaces. What policies does the town have? Can you just not detail them? Refer me to the policies or statutes that control things like retention of images, release to other agencies, security of those images from private parties?
And who are you asking this of?
Of anyone who can answer that.
My understanding, and Chief Murphy isn't here this evening, but in issue of cameras and license plate surveillance equipment and others, we are in full compliance with the necessary federal-state requirements in terms of retention and release of those data. We're very cautious of that.
Okay, there would be the police chief that could answer that in detail. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Nancy Donahue, Precinct 9. I'd just like clarification. In this discussion, it seems that all of the security, not all, but most of the security cameras are outside facilities, or are they, how many are inside facilities? The school facilities I'm concerned about.
The high school has both exterior and interior cameras. The other schools are being outfitted with exterior only right now. After that's all done, we'll go back, and then we'll start to do the inside where necessary.
So you're not concerned about what goes on inside a building? Why are you not doing it? I don't understand.
Security cameras typically aren't necessary in an elementary school, even middle schools. The high school is where they're necessary, and that's where we have them.
I taught for 35 years in an elementary school, and I taught in a school where there were facilities that you could see what was going on. And believe me, there are times you need to know what is going on.
Thank you. Next.
Sue Dandrow, Precinct 9. I'm looking at page H19 with the capex for the next five years. And this evening, we're voting on 3.3 million. Next year is 9.7 million. And the, is that not correct?
No, that's correct. Well, we won't be bringing $9.7 million to this town meeting next year. In fact, later on in this town meeting session, we'll be talking about an energy management performance contract that will address many of the items in that 9.7. So no, we're not, we're not, we're not going to bring forth a 9.7 capital request next year. What we're attempting to show is the backlog of requests that have been submitted. And therefore, what happens is, we recommend the amount for this year, and what doesn't get approved gets ended up pushed back a year. And you can see how the backlog builds up.
So when you refer to energy management, I see that, so that $6 million difference, almost all of it is to the schools?
Yes.
And for HVAC, mostly improvements?
Yes. You will see later on in this town meeting session, either tonight or another evening, that we'll be looking at a $18 million energy management performance contract, of which $14 million would be invested in the schools.
And the only school that doesn't have an air handler improvement is South Row. Can you speak to that?
It's because it's already been completed.
It's been completed, okay.
Thank you. See, no more debate? Let's vote.
Thanks, Mike. Thank you. Thanks, Ryan. We'll be okay.
This requires a two-thirds vote. It's a clear two-thirds majority. I have a motion here from Matthew Hansen, Precinct 1. Would you like to explain your motion? It says, "I moved to Town Meeting..." Would you like to explain your motion? It says, "I moved a town meeting, takes Article 18 out of order and acts on it before Article 11."
Yeah, thank you. The reason for this amendment is very simple. We all know that we're going to be here until 11 or past 11 tonight, and we all know we're going to be coming back on Monday night as well. But there are a couple dozen families that came here tonight to speak on regards to the turf fields. They brought their students with them and their children with them, who also want to speak on this article. We know we're going to be here until 11 o'clock anyways. I think it makes sense to take Article 18 out of order, whether you're going to vote for it or against it. I think it makes the most sense for those family and children to be able to speak now. That's all. Thank you.
Any further debate on that motion?
I'd just like to add, I was thinking a good place to put it is after Article 12, because Article 12 allows community preservation to explain the budget. And then this is one of the articles regarding community preservation money. So I was going to make a motion to move Article 18 to after Article 12.
Are you making that an amendment to his motion?
I guess I am.
Could we fill out the...
I'll make that a friendly amendment. Is that mine? That's okay.
Okay. Mr. Hansen is going to make it a friendly amendment. You don't have to fill anything out. So the motion says, "Take Article 18 out of order and act on it before Article 11 after Article 12."
No, no, just...
Hmm?
After Article 12.
After Article 12. Any further debate on this? Okay, let's vote on it. That's to move Article 18 before 11 and act on it after 12. Wait a minute.
Mr. Moderator, I'm so, I'm confused. Before 11, after 12? Why don't we vote on 11 and 12, and then do Article 18 after 12?
That's the motion I intended.
If you want to do that, vote this one down or amend it.
Sorry, no, that was, that was, that was the intent of the friendly amendment. The Article, Article 11 will be quick. Article 12 is the CPC reports. So if we could just do it right after the CPC reports on the budget.
So you want to move it after 12?
Yeah, that's it. That's it.
Okay. Let me get this straight. Motion on the floor is to take Article 18 after Article 12. Start voting. after Article 12. Now we're on Article 11. Town manager Paul Cohen moves that town transfers $50,000 from the sale of graves and lots to the Cemetery Improvement and Development Fund. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This is a request from the Cemetery Commissioners to basically use $50,000 from the sale of graves and lots to continue the improvements at Fairview Cemetery. This generally is an annual article that comes from the Cemetery Commission.
Any questions? Seeing none. Recommendations?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen recommends approval.
Any debate? Seeing none. We're voting to transfer 50,000 of funds from the grave and lot sales to a fund used for cemetery improvement and development. Start now. The S's are 139. There are no no's, and is one abstention. Article 18, I'm sorry, Article 11 passes. Article 12, I have a standing motion to waive the reading of Article 12. Raise your tickets. All those in favor? Opposed? Reading is waived.
Hi, my name is Bob Morris. I'm chairman of the Community Preservation Committee, and here to speak about Article 12. So the Community Preservation Act, as you see in the slide, it's funded through a 1.5% surcharge on the property tax after $100,000 property tax exemption. So it really ends up being closer to about a 1% surcharge. It's close to about $60 almost now for a typical homeowner's tax bill. And there are low income and senior moderate income exemptions that can be applied to through the assessor's office. So for fiscal year 2014, we're anticipating bringing in through the surcharge a total of $842,000. And we expecting a state match of, for last year's funds, of $205,000. So the state match is now about 25%. The total funding that will be coming in for 2014 will be a bit over $1 million. $1,47,000 is expected. We are required to put aside reservations for three categories: open space community housing and historic preservation. We're required to put a minimum of 10% set-asides for each of the three. So that's the $105,000 for each of the three buckets of open space community housing and historic preservation. We're also, would like to put aside $50,000 for our administration, which is used for appraisals, surveys, plans. And now a new use for it is to implement the preservation restrictions on open space and historic, which entails a bit of legal work. So we're requesting a budgeted reserve of $270,000, which is, after taking the total anticipated revenue, subtracting out the reservations, administrative, the debt service for the town halls and the Sheehan Farm, the anticipated debt service for other warrant articles that will be in front of you tonight, the affordable housing and synthetic fields. And that ends up where we request a budgeted reserve of $270,000, so that if the, if we needed to use the money coming in from this fiscal year, we would have the ability to do that. The slide is showing the continuing payments on the $2.8 million bond for the town hall restorations, North Town Hall and Center Town Hall. Pretty much wipes out the $105,000 set-aside for historic preservation. And then there's an additional amount, $273,888, from reserve for expenditures, for a total of $378,888 for fiscal year 2014. And as you can see, the payments go out to 2021. We also have a $785,000 bond for the Sheehan Farm, which is a 10-year bond. Almost wipe out the open space account with a $95,700 payment, and, which leaves around a little under $10,000, and shows the payments going out to 2023, to pay off the Sheehan Farm bond. That's it. Any questions?
Questions?
Sam Chase, Precinct 1. Through you, Mr. Moderator, to the speaker. Bob, I may have missed it, and if I did, I'm sorry. Do you know how much money we have received in terms of matching funds from the state since the inception of this program?
I don't have the number off the top of my head. It's certainly in the millions.
In the millions?
Oh, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen recommends approval.
We're in a debate section. Seeing no one queued up for debate. We are voting.
The vote is 140 yes, 4 no, 1 abstention. The article passes. Now we take up Article 18. Before I read this, I know there's going to be a lot of discussion. Please follow the rules. Do not ask a question that you already know the answer to. This is not a time to try to sway votes. You do that during debate. Now, during debate, we have two microphones. You don't line up in one line and then branch off. You have one line for the pro votes, one line for the con votes. That's why the camera has been moved to the back of the room. So make sure you do that. Now, during question and answer, only reps can ask questions. During debate, any resident can debate.
I have a standing motion to waive the reading. All those in favor, vote yes. Opposed? Mister?
I just wanted to speak for one minute on the use of CPA funds for synthetic turf fields, because I know that's a, that's a question in people's minds. There was a change in the state legislation this last summer, which changed the way that CPA funds could be used for recreational uses. Previously, to the change, in order to use CPA funds for a recreational use, the land had to be purchased with CPA funding. The change allows the recreational funds to be used on town-owned projects, town-owned land. So it opened up a whole new series of uses. And there's also, there's one other section specifically for turf fields. You're not allowed to use CPA funds for the actual acquisition of the turf, the artificial turf. And in this project, the CPA funds would not be used for the actual acquisition, but it would be used for the many other aspects of the project, the preparation, installation, and all the other aspects. With that, I'll turn it over to Paul.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. A few introductory remarks before I turn it over to the chairman of the Synthetic Turf Fields Committee, George Dixon. First off, I just want to thank everyone who assisted in the fundraising efforts towards this project and this article. But I really want to speak to really what's behind all this. What are we attempting to accomplish? And really, this article isn't about me. It's not about Sal LePole. It's not about George Dixon or anyone in the community. Basically, we see this as a quality of life issue, and that there are amenities in the community that, and that we're seeking to establish, similar to the renovated town halls, the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail, the Sheehan Farm, and so forth. And in today's lifetime, in terms of the community uses, you know, we now have children who, different the generation, when I grew up, who were playing baseball and those activities. We now have the popularity of soccer, lacrosse, field hockey, and other uses of fields that really just do a number on grass surfaces. And that's why, and you see a list here, of why we're sort of now late to the coming of this effort in terms of installing turf fields. You recall at the session on Monday night, Neshoba Tech is installing a synthetic field this summer. That'll be the third turf field in Westford. We see these turf fields in Tingsboro. Tucksbury's going forward for one. Innovation Academy in Tingsboro has a field as well, Lowell, and so forth. And so we worked on this project. We tried to figure out, how can we meet this need, but recognizing constraints on the taxpayer and the issue of property taxes in the community? And we came up with this solution of addressing it without having any direct impact or increase in the property tax. Because we're seeking $1.2 million from the existing community preservation surcharge that Bob Morris spoke of, and we're going to borrow $800,000. But that borrowing isn't going to go on upon the tax levy. That's going to come from the field revenues. So, and then we raised $500,000 in private funds to make this become a reality. And so again, we respectfully ask for your consideration of this article. And now I'll turn it over to George Dixon, the chair of the Synthetic Turf Field Committee.
Thank you, Paul. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. I was very honored to have been part of this committee. And I'm very honored to work with a lot of people who, members of this committee who've put in hundreds and hundreds of hours to make this plan a success, to design a plan, and have some support. I'd like to just, I'll just name them off. The committee, from the Board of Selectmen, it's myself and Matt Hansen, the chairman. From the School Committee, Nick DeSilvio, Al Thomas, and Janet Askenberg was on previously, previous to the last election. Kathy McWilliams, the business manager of the School Department. Scott Moreau, the athletic director. Frank Tiano, superintendent of the schools. Paul Cohen, town manager. Sal LePole, fundraising chairman. Did a tremendous job. And he had some real health problems in the family, and it took a lot of his time. But I appreciate his effort. It was a tremendous effort. Greg Piper has helped us tremendously. Jim Young, president of the Boosters, has been a tremendous asset. And very special thanks to Anne Marie Fiori for helping us with all our computer work, et cetera. And the many hundreds and hundreds of volunteers who have helped this become, hopefully, a successful operation. The support from almost the entire community was overwhelming. Many who donated money, their time, and their talents to project, to make this project a reality. I believe that this is, these would be great assets for the town for a long period of time. And I only hope that we're successful this evening. With that said, I'd like to turn this over to superintendent of the schools, Frank Tiano. And he can give you a little history of this. Thank you very much.
Before Dr. Tiano speaks, I need a vote to let Scott Moreau, athletic director, who's a resident of Tingsboro, I need your approval to let him speak. All those in favor, raise your tickets. Opposed? Okay. Doctor?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Folks, I just want to give you just a brief background regarding the generation of this committee. Back in 2011, as superintendent of schools, one of my goals was to create a fields committee looking at the maintenance of the fields. As you've seen on the slides, with the age of our buildings and looking at a 20-year capital plan, the town, through the capital plan, has done a really nice job in terms of making sure, making sure that our schools are safe, and that they're updated, and that kids have a great environment to get an education. What we wanted to do was focus that same attention onto our fields to make sure that they had play surfaces that were safe and also conducive to recess, athletics, and so forth. So to put together that committee, one has to know the unique relationship that we have between the general government, the schools, as well as the youth groups here in town. between the general government, the schools, as well as the youth groups here in town. Some of you folks may remember back in 2008, the Community Education Department, which is under the School Department, absorbed the Recreation Department. Therefore, our Community Education does all the scheduling for all the fields regardless whether they're on school property or not. The Maintenance Department, a few years prior, had gone over to the General Government side so that they are in charge of maintaining all the fields across the town. So you have the schools, and you have the General Government, and now you have the youth groups in town as well who have service agreements essentially, where in lieu of fees that they would maintain the fields as well as do capital improvements. So to put this committee together, we looked at the Director of Community Education, the Town Manager, the Director of Facilities, the Business Manager, and the Athletic Director as well. And as we were looking, eventually, this was in the fall of 2011, we brought together also the youth groups around. So we had representatives from baseball, softball, field hockey, football, and so forth. As we talked about the maintenance to develop charts, how much that each, how much money that the groups put into the fields, one of the things that we kept coming back to was the ability to rest our fields, and essentially that our fields were being overused. In order to maintain a field, you need to be able to provide it with the care that it needs, the fertilization and so forth, and be able to stay off it. And we seem to be unable to do that with the number of groups that we have here in town. The decision, the idea kept coming back to having turf fields in Chelmsford. What we would be able to do is significantly increase the amount of hours that groups could come off the regular grass fields and go onto the turf fields. And by providing those spaces as well as the time, we would be able to dedicate more maintenance time and be able to upkeep our fields across the town Chelmsford. In November, the Selectmen authorized the Town Manager to put together the Synthetic Recreation Field Committee. In a short period of time since last November, this group has put together a creative way to publicly and privately finance two synthetic turf fields here in Chelmsford and be able to maintain them so that we have a safe, versatile, and beautiful recreational space. The community response to this has been outstanding. The generosity has been great, as Mr. Dixon mentioned, including our local businesses, our corporate friends here in town, families, police, fire, sports groups, PTOs, hundreds of volunteers and supporters. And according to Anne Marie, we have over 40,000 fans on a turf field Facebook. That started, that energy started with our first kickoff back in January through all the comedy nights, the Lions Walk, if you were there, beautiful Sunday in April. Over 100 runners, over 200 walkers came out to support this initiative. About 300, 400 people at the McCarthy Field for the day here to support this initiative. Along with that, our Harley Raffle, thanks to our police. We have a golf tournament that immediately filled out 130 golfers that will happen later on in May. We support everybody's enthusiasm. We also appreciate the support of the School Committee, the Board of Selectmen, the Community Preservation Committee, as well as the Finance Committee. At this time, we're going to invite Scott Moreau. He's our Athletic Director at Chelmsford High School, and he's going to bring you through this presentation. And you'll see how all this private fundraising, along with the revenue generation projected, will make this not only an affordable choice for us, but also a benefit to our kids in the community at large. Scott?
Thank you, Dr. Tiano. First, I'd like to just thank you for allowing me to come in and propose this plan to you tonight. Once again, the committee's worked long and hard on it, and we believe it to be a feasible option for the community. Am I just going to hit this and we're going to? So you've heard about how we got started. The proposal itself, it's a value proposition. So the idea is to create two new multipurpose recreation assets. One at CHS Simontian Stadium, one at McCarthy Middle School Track and Field. As we go through this plan, you'll notice that we believe it's going to add about 4,000 hours of community recreational space. The total cost of the fields or the project is $2.5 million, and there's no additional, this is very important, there's no additional tax burden to the residents. All community members will benefit, especially school-aged children. It will give us the ability to play and practice on high-quality fields all the time, resulting in improved performance and hopefully fewer injuries. We believe it to be a more productive use of open space. It preserves open space in other areas of town. So the themes. The ability to use the fields all seasons. You'll notice that currently, we have to close our fields much of, many of our seasons just to rest them so we can get them ready to go again. And you'll see that as we go further into this presentation. The productivity. Turf will create productive return of eight fields in two. So we talk about that a little bit. So what you'll get out of these fields is the ability to play lacrosse, boys and girls, field hockey, boys and girls soccer, football, all just on these fields. It'll be lined for all of those fields. So you'll see later on in this presentation as well, the ability for us to save on annual maintenance costs. How do we leverage the project? You've heard a little bit about it. So with $500,000 in private entrepreneurial plan, users willing to play, to pay in terms of private groups coming in to rent our fields, we believe the installation is a prudent transaction for the town. Conservation. Conserves the use of water, fertilizer, pesticides, and things like that that go into all, maintaining all of our fields currently. The current condition. You'll notice on the top left of this screen is CHS Simontian Stadium, and the bottom right, all the way down to the bottom, there is the McCarthy Middle School Field. CHS Simontian Stadium. You'll note that we rest this field, we play on this field starting in September, and then we're done with it in November, and we do not use it again until the following September. So what does that mean? It means that we don't get to use it for any of our spring sports. Nobody in the community ever uses it. Just our school kids use that field. So right now, currently, there are no youth groups using Simontian Stadium. The McCarthy Middle School Track and Field. That picture was taken just before we had to rest that field for about a year so we could get on it this past fall. So again, we're resting these fields just to get them ready to play, and you'll see in future slides what they look like after just a fall of use. So what's our goal? To create a safe and available recreational space. It's a broad benefit for youth sports, for school and interscholastic, intramural fitness and casual users, for the whole community, and that's the key. This isn't just about school-aged kids or youth organizations. This is a community project. This is for everybody. It's a safe environment, it's a versatile space, and we believe it to be cost-effective. This is a shot of what the complex will look like after it's done. This is the McCarthy Middle School complex, so you'll notice the rubberized track, the new field. And just take notice to the outside, if you look at the top left of the picture, there'll be a new walkway, a welcoming area, it'll just kind of enhance the experience of coming in. We'll be able to charge for games, so ticket revenue and things like that. There'll be a spot to show appreciation for donors that have really stepped up along the way in the process. CHS Simontian Stadium. Again, the field, and you'll notice, if you can see it, it's lined for all sports, and as well as the new area when you walk in, it'll be a little bit different. Again, a little bit more of a welcoming area as you walk in. And then again, if you look just past, if you're looking in the bottom right of the screen, if you go just past the red building, you'll notice there'll be a little, a spot for recognition of donors as well. So what are the advantages? Well, when we look at these two spaces, we're very lucky. We're very lucky to have them. We're very lucky of where we're located, where those spaces are located, not only in the community, but regionally. So what happens is, our infrastructure is already there, all right? And that's what's very important in this proposal. Many communities have built these fields but haven't had the infrastructure in place already. So where we kind of catch a break is, the fields are there. We already have the space. We already have snack bars. We already have places to park. We already have lights at one of them, bleachers at one of them, all right? The plan is to include those things in the other. And what this will allow us to do, we'll be able to host major, major tournaments. We'll be, 15 years ago, and if Jack Fletcher was right here in front of you right now, he could tell you even more than I that about 15 to 20 years ago, we were the spot. Anybody in the state, when the state tournaments came around, they called us to host them. We had the best spot to do it. Our boosters were thriving, we were selling donuts all the time, hot dogs all the time, all right? Everybody wanted to come to Chelmsford, rent our fields, use our fields. Well, then we started putting turf fields in, and all the communities around us started putting turf fields in. So what did they do? They called those other places to rent those facilities, to use those facilities, to run So our current challenges. And I've said this a little bit before, we're unable to use our fields much of the season, and you'll see this. The picture on the left, we rested that field for almost a year. The picture on the right, we rest that field for over six months every year. Those are the current conditions at the end of the playing season this past fall. The two outside pictures are McCarthy Middle School. The two inside pictures are the high school field. So what do we get out of it? Right now, we have uneven surfaces, ice, mud, dust. If anybody went to the boys' lacrosse game yesterday, it was a pretty unhappy ending for us. And what happened was, game was tied, there's dust all through the middle of the field, our goalie's sitting there, the ball's in front of him. Kid from Tewksbury goes to pick up the ball to put it into the net, he takes a stick full of sand and puts it in the goalie's face. Not on purpose, it just is what it is. The field's all dirt and muddy and dusty. Throws it up in his face, ball goes in the net, the goalie never saw the goal. This is what we deal with on a daily basis. The grass and the annual maintenance costs, you'll see how those will be reduced. Again, that's McCarthy Middle School at the end of last fall. Remember, prior to last fall, we rested that field for almost a year. The opportunity. Year-round availability. It's available all four seasons. You'll notice, later in these slides, we'll talk about how to gain revenue in terms of renting these fields out. A couple of communities locally took the idea of renting these fields out in the winter. People thought they were crazy. Well, people were banging their doors down to run adult leagues in the wintertime. One community in particular, Acton, plowed their field just so they could rent it out and gain some revenue. Friend of mine in Acton gave me some of this information. As you know, they built two turf fields very recently, and they already had one prior to. Obviously, this is, it's easy to see. It's very versatile. It makes the use in scheduling a luxury, and that's the simple fact. We cancel games now when it's not even raining. Why? Because it rained for three hours in the morning, and we can't get those fields ready to go for the afternoon. So youth organizations are canceled, our games are canceled. This could rain all day long, stop at 3:30, and we're ready to go. So year-round availability, the current availability. Right now, how we have our fields currently, we use our fields about 70 days a year. And you'll notice in this pie, the community gets a very small sliver of that pie. The school gets the rest of the pie. And that just is how it works. Again, you have to rest these fields. With this proposal, we're looking at about 350 days of possible usage, five times the amount that we currently get. And look at the pie. The community gets more than 50% of the pie after that. The community will use these fields more than the schools. Again, with the opportunity, this is Simontian Stadium this past fall. If you look at the picture on the left, there's a calendar, last October, of the usage from last October for just the high school events. They're in yellow. So those are the days we had games. You'll notice we never had a practice on the field. We don't practice on the Simontian Stadium. We cannot. We can't take a chance to damage that field. If we had turf, and you look at the calendar on the right, the yellow is all the school practice and games, so we'd be able to practice there now, and the red would be all the youth organization times. Remember, Simontian Stadium has never been used for youth organizations, very rarely. One, two times a year, back when I went to school here. Since I've been around, we don't use it for any youth organizations. So you'll notice that those red blotches there are going to be times that the community or outside rentals could use the stadium. So a big question that has come up is, all right, we're going to take a bond from the town, how are we going to pay that back? How are we going to convince the taxpayers that they're not going to have to pay this back? Well, we know, from talking to other communities, that we pay that bond back through renting these fields. So if you look at this simply, it's just a model of how many hours the high school will use the field, and then how many hours will be left over for the community and outside rentals. After the high school uses Simontian Stadium for the year, there'll be 1,532 possible rentable hours on that field. Okay? At $125, which is about the average rate to rent one of those fields, it's $191,000 in revenue. Now, we were very careful not to be too aggressive when we talked about how our revenues would work. What we decided to do was, take a third of those hours and make those the rentable hours. That means the other part would go to all of the youth organizations and the community at large. So only renting 1/3 of those hours at $125, you're looking at about $63,750. That's on one field in revenue. Again, only renting 1/3 of the available hours. So again, the opportunity, McCarthy. Picture on the left, I won't be boring and go over it all again. The yellow's the school, the red is what the youth organizations used this past fall. The right-hand side is what would happen with a turf field. You'll notice that it will never be closed. There'll be an opportunity for somebody to be on that field every single day of the month next October. Again, very similar to the slide, two slides ago. After the school uses McCarthy, we don't use it nearly as much as we use the Simontian Stadium. Just after that, you have 1,900 available hours. 1,900 hours at $125 is $238,000. Again, we don't want to be aggressive, too aggressive. We scale it back, we say we're only going to be able to rent that field 1/3 of the hours. That is very, very conservative. At $125 an hour, you're looking at $79,000. So between the two fields, you're looking at $142,000 in revenue, only renting 1/3 of the available hours that you could. So the opportunity is a cost-effective. Well, we've talked about it already. How do we leverage local dollars? You've seen the plan, 1.2 in community preservation, private fundraising, and the bond. People talk a lot about, is there any cost in savings and maintenance? So this is just a snapshot of an annual savings and maintenance at Simontian Field out of about 59%, or $11,500. That's just one field. That's cutting the grass, lining the grass, fertilizers, pesticides, all the things that you have to do to keep that going. Just a picture of a local community and what we would get for our money. This is a picture at Tingsboro High School. I was part of that group that put that field together. I can't tell you how refreshing it was once it got done and what we were able to do. It was limitless, and it still is today, and that was about seven or eight years ago. There's no plan right now to have to redo that field. They're going to easily get another seven, eight, 10 years out of it. The opportunity in terms of configuration of the fields. So at Simontian Stadium, it's a general field, it's one field that can house, like I said, soccer, football, lacrosse, field hockey. At McCarthy, we have a little bit more space to work with, so it'll be a little bit bigger. So what's very important is for the youth organizations, especially a soccer organization, is that instead of just being able to play one game at a time, they can use their U8 or U10 teams, play alongside, and play two games at once. So we have the dimensions to be able to do that, and that's in the plan for McCarthy. The opportunity for the school district. Improved quality and safety of play, we've talked about it. Minimize cancellation, maximize scheduling. How many teams does it affect? 13 school teams in the fall. Boys and girls soccer, three different levels. Field hockey, three levels. Football, four levels. Six teams in the spring. Boys and girls lacrosse, three levels. Boys and girls lacrosse, three levels. Boys and girls track, okay? CHS marching band in the fall. Right now, currently, if you know anything about our ma-, our band, uh, a long time ago, somebody a lot smarter than me decided to put lines in the parking lot, because they couldn't get on the field, so they actually painted a football field in our parking lot so that they could practice the right way, and so they can get in the right spots. Well, great in theory, but when your whole student body parks out there, it's pretty hard for them to get out there and actually use it, so. Uh, a lot of times, they can't get on these fields to do what they need to do, this is gonna be easy for them now. So we figure that about seven hundred, uh, high school students could benefit, that's just extracurricular activities, alright? That's not even diving into the fact that our phys ed classes can use it at both the schools, alright? And if they were up here talking to you, they, they have the same issues, dusty, terrible fields that are really hard to play games on currently. So the opportunity for the community, the youth organizations, about twenty-four hundred and sixty kids should benefit from these fields. Pop Water, about three hundred participants. Youth soccer has nine hundred participants in the fall, eight hundred in the spring. Youth lacrosse, three hundred and fifty participants. Youth field hockey, about a hundred and twenty participants. Outside rentals, state and regional tournaments, I talked a little bit about that before, okay? Adult leagues. I already know that if these fields go in, I have to, I have to return some calls saying that we'd be able to come out and rent these fields to you. Currently, we turned them down, we have to re-, rent, uh, rest our fields. So all of these things have the potential to bring revenue into local businesses such as restaurants, hotels, and things like that. So funding the project. Estimated cost of about two-point-five million dollars, community preservation, one point two, private fundraising, half a million dollars, a bond from the town for about eight-hundred thousand dollars. And how are we gonna pay it back? Talked a little bit about it already. Paid back through revenues from rentals, naming rights, and possible increased use of fees. Funding the project. So you've heard me talk a little bit about it, and it, it wouldn't be fair if I just pulled these numbers out of the air and said I called a friend. This isn't, this isn't what it was. We got the idea from another community that actually has put this into play. So from our rental revenues, like I said before, we think we're gonna get about a hundred and forty-two thousand, just renting one-third of the hours. Again, a very low estimate, but we're safe there. A, a revenue example of what's already being done, Acton Boxborough School District, they put these fields in about a year ago, and to date, right now, the same amount of fields, they've rented their fields for a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. Those are real numbers. A five-year lease tenant that went out, solicited them, and said, we heard you have these fields, we're a private soccer organization, we need eight hundred hours a year, can you give them to us? Yep, we can give them to you. We'll give you a reduced rate because you're giving, you're getting so many hours. That's eighty thousand dollars from one leasing, alright? A five-year lease tenant at two hundred hours per year, hundred and ten dollars an hour, twenty-two, so you can read it. All tenants are private athletic club teams. These are teams that aren't just in our, in our community, they're these private teams that our kids go and play on in the off-season. So those leagues don't have the infrastructure or a place to play. They call local communities to rent their facilities out. There's not enough of them around. So the development of the plan and how we got here. Last June, after you heard Dr. Tiano say that we started this committee, and we started looking into these fields, we did an engineering study that was funded by the schools. Moving into last December, we got school committee approval of the concept. Shortly after that, we went to the community preservation committee and asked them. We soon hired a design firm. This is where we are tonight at town meeting approval. If everything goes smooth, we can select a vendor to do the work in the coming days, in coming weeks. Installation can begin right after graduation. The field at the high school will be available as of September, and the one at McCarthy will be probably a few weeks after that, because we're putting a track around it as Some local communities with fields already. Acton Boxborough, Andover, Bedford, Concord, Carlisle, Haverhill, Innovation Academy, Lawrence, Lowell, Neshobatech, putting one in now, North Andover, three fields, Tingsborough, Westford. Uh, what you need to understand, from a school level, is we have highly, highly competitive teams. We traditionally make the tournament in almost everything. We get to the tournament, we play on artificial surfaces. We practice all year long on grass. Our field hockey team is probably, year in and year out, one of the top five teams in the state. If you were to look at the other four teams, every one of them comes from a community with artificial surfaces. We actually take our girls towards the end of the season, and we send them to UMass Lowell to rent their field to get our girls ready for a tournament so they compete at their
Question and answer period.
Glenn Thorne, Precinct Five, thank you for the excellent presentation. Two questions, who is the project manager for the installation of the fields?
Uh, Whitman and, Whitman and Bingham Engineering Firm.
Say it again.
Whitman and Bingham Engineering Firm.
Okay, so they'll have an individual manage the project, I assume. And when, and, uh, when the fields are approved by town meeting tonight, who is going to be the person responsible in the schools, I assume it's the schools, for renting out the fields, advertising, all that's associated with the functioning of the two fields?
I think you're looking at him.
Okay, thank you.
Next question.
Karen DiNato, Precinct Eight. Um, I know fundraising has already started, can you tell me, tell me how much we have raised so far through the private fundraising?
Yeah, we have, uh, Salapoli that has really spearheaded this whole process for us, uh, so I think he's here to kinda talk a little bit about the fundraising and where we are with it.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes?
He's a resident.
He's a resident. He's a resident, he can speak.
Hi, how are you? Salapoli, forty-seven Grandview, what is the question you'd like to ask?
Uh, I know the fundraising has already begun, and I wanted to find out how long it's been going on, like in two months, one month, and how much was, we've raised to date.
Well, that's a, that's a great question. The fundraising first started in January, but it got off to a very slow start naturally because of the holidays. And I will tell you, um, less than thirty days ago, there was twenty thousand dollars in the account. We had some bills we had to pay, twenty thousand. Today, there are over three-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand dollars in the account. As a matter of fact, just in the last twenty-four hours, I'm holding twenty-four thousand dollars in checks that this community has come together and supported, twenty-four thousand dollars.
Thank you.
Next question.
Bill Wagner, Precinct Eight. Taking into account the increased usage of the fields, have you, uh, also taken into account engineering on, uh, the parking lots and, uh, the, the, um, increased traffic
Um, right now, what we've been doing for years, especially at McCarthy, because McCarthy has limited parking on the side of the fields, is all the youth organizations that use the McCarthy field now, all the Chumsford residents, uh, that have kids that play and come to the game, are asked to park on the opposite side, which, um, has a larger lot, and they walk around where the pods are and come out, which leaves the parking for the guests who are not familiar with the community, and that will continue. At Chumsford High School, because a lot of the events are on off-hours, we have full use of the Harrington parking lot as well, which usually gives us enough to house what we need to do.
Uh, that wasn't quite addressing the issue of, uh, the usage of the parking lots themselves, uh, damage to the, to the asphalt and just through normal usage.
Well, for starters, the McCarthy, um, parking lot has been fully redone, we finished that last year. Um, all new curb and sidewalks and asphalt has been done there. The high school, um, does have some issues in the back, they get addressed right now yearly, um, with some maintenance, and, uh, we're hoping that that's one of our capital projects coming forward quite soon, especially if we happen to approve the eighteen-point-one million, which will take a lot off the plate and give us the ability to do that. We have enough park, but yes, the Rosamiris at the high, high school can use some work.
And then the second question I have, uh, part of the, uh, presentation included possible rentals during the winter, uh, have you included snow clearing equipment into the, uh, estimate?
I, I have not, uh, we have snow removal equipment, um, I have never, ever plowed a turf field. Um, I would love to get some more knowledge of how to do it before I intend to do it. Um, and if we, if we elect to do it in the wintertime, we will be certainly looking into that. But as of this date, I can't tell you, I can't.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, Tom Rand, Precinct Eight. Uh, just a question for the presenter, I, I think it's a great presentation, the piece I didn't see is, will there be a separate mechanism set up so that the rental monies are written in such a way that they don't go into the general fund, and they actually go towards the payment of the bond, assuming we approve it?
Yeah, you, uh, I think Dr. Tiano will talk a little bit more about that. We, we do have an account already set up with our rentals of gymnasiums, so.
Tom Scott, subtly, uh, you know, just answered your question. It would go through a revolving account, you know, where we do have rentals, you know, whether it's for CYBL, our, our fields and so forth, so it would go through that account. And we would create another ledger account so that we could actually see that piece, and then our end-of-the-year report, you folks would be able to see that, and also to, you know, we post our actuals online every month.
Okay, that's what I was looking for, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, next.
Beverly Barrett, Precinct Five, I just have a couple of questions. My first one is, uh, since CPA money is being used for this project, what category does it fall under? There's historic and community housing, and there's open spaces, it's, it's open space, but it's not open spaces I think of open space.
No, it, it falls under the open space slash recreational, which has, which as Bob Morris, the chair of CPC noted earlier, the amended Community Preservation Act, this falls under the open space recreational category.
Okay. Uh, my other question is whether the athletic fees that students pay to play high school sports, if they'll go up as a result of putting this, uh, field in?
No, currently, we already have fees in place, and they have nothing to do with this field.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Dave Dubinsky, Precinct One, two. Two questions, uh, both health-related issues. Uh, one, has the committee, uh, considered, uh, lead contamination in either the blades of grass, the paint, or the rubberized dirt pellets? That's question one.
The, the, the current construction of, uh, materials do not contain any lead components. So that's not a concern with, uh, with the construction of these fields.
Excellent. Uh, second, health-related question. Literature that I've read, uh, the last couple of days, has suggested that there's, um, potential for, uh, VOCs and SVOCs, volatile organic comp- compounds, and semi-organic volatile compounds, uh, that might have downstream health risk, neurological effects on the children. Uh, has that been considered, and has that been addressed?
I'm gonna have Brian Melissi come up as, uh, our engineering firm.
Thank you.
Believe he's a town resident as well.
I'm an alumni, but not a town resident. Not a town resident.
Uh, could I ask you to repeat the question, please? I was in the back.
Sure.
Excuse me, do you live in town?
I do not.
Oh, well then, state your name and the community you live in, and we have to get permission for you to speak.
Okay, thank you. My name is Brian Melissi with Whitman and Bingham Associates, I'm a resident of Westford, Mass. If it helps, oh, I'm an alumni at Chumsford High.
I approve that the man be allowed to speak.
Not required. All those in favor of allowing him to speak, raise your tickets, opposed. You may speak.
Sure, so the quest, the question is, uh, has the committee or, or someone qualified in, in this particular area considered the downstream, uh, potential negative impact of, uh, VOCs and SVOCs?
Uh, I mean, we have, the, the current, um, current reports out there state there are really no effects from any lead contamination or anything coming off of these fields. There were a couple of studies, uh, from, from fields in New Jersey, uh, that, that were, uh, it was, it, the contamination was actually pointed to bad fill. So there are zero studies now that say that lead contamination comes off of this. However, uh, in both designs, uh, we do have stormwater mitigation, uh, built into the project, in which it'll help any stormwater coming off of these fields.
Okay. Uh, just as a quick addendum, it's, it's not, so, what my concern is, the VOCs and the SVOCs are not considered, concerned with lead. There are other contaminants that are potentially hazardous. Thank you.
Welcome.
Tom Fall, Precinct Five. Uh, in your presentation, I noticed there are probably twenty-one fields in the area that you'd be, would be competing with you. And there's, let's see if I'm correct, there's eight-hundred-thousand-dollar bond going out on this. If for some reason, with all this competition, you didn't meet your goals, um, I've been informed at the pre-town meeting that the town meeting would have to pick up the cost of that. Is there any way you can, uh, we can work anything that would guarantee the taxpayers would not have, hit any burden on this, if you didn't meet your goals? Mr., Mr. Cohen?
We're pretty certain that we are gonna be able to do what we say we can do, that's why we left those estimates very low in terms of how many hours we'd be able to rent it. We're only talking about renting a third of those available hours. Currently, those fields already exist, and there's not enough space for people, so we're sure that those companies, those organizations are gonna be able to come in here. But, to answer your question, if for some catastrophic reason we weren't able to, uh, I think the community's shown already that we'd be able to find out a way to pay for that bond, uh, between more fundraising and whatever else we had to do. But, uh, we're, we're fairly certain that we're gonna be able to rent those like we need to, to pay back the bond.
Okay, thank you very much, I hope so.
Okay, ju- just a technical point, when you get up to speak to the microphone, stay at least six inches from the microphone, and you won't get all that popping sound.
Dennis Sheehan, Precinct Four, Mr. Moderator, uh, a question, how long does a surface last, and, and what's a replacement cost?
Uh, typically, the, the life of these fields is around ten to twelve years, um, and the replacement costs go upwards of four dollars a square foot.
And, and what's that, what's that number?
Roughly around three-to-four-hundred-thousand dollars to replace these fields.
Is, is any plan to, i- in effect, that, so we look ahead and have this payment ready to go, or is this on the town?
Good question. So no, the, the, the plan that we have in place through the field rentals is, like I said, we, we're looking at about a hundred and forty-two K, at a, a, uh, a very conservative number, we're looking at about a hundred thousand dollars a year on the bond, so we're looking about putting forty thousand dollars a year away to be able to take care of the replacement costs as they come.
Okay, second question, where does this leave the, uh, the, uh, community preservation funds for open space?
I'll say, I'll ask Bob Morris, the chair of the Community Preservation Committee, to come up and address the fund.
So the, uh, the specific account that we put the set aside into each year, the open space account is already, um, used up by the Sheehan Farm, uh, no relation, to, uh, bond payment. So, of the hundred, there's, is basically zeroed out, and we're putting a hundred and five thousand into it and taking ninety-five thousand, seven hundred out of it. So, uh, the payments will come from, uh, the remainder, you, we have to put ten percent set asides for each of the three categories, and the remaining seventy percent is available for, uh, any of the uses.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Next.
Fran McDougal, precinct one. Thank you. I just didn't want to do a lot of popping. I have a few questions, as most people know. I said from the very beginning on this, if you could show me the money, I'd be very happy. And I ask this of the group, and I thank you all for your hard work. First of all, I have a question for Mr. Lopoli. Tonight's paper, may I ask what this ad is about in this evening's paper?
Yes, that's a mistake, Fran. I apologize. That was done by the Lowell Sun. They made an error, but I have-
No, they didn't.
Yes, they did, Fran.
No arguing. No arguing.
Fran, in my hand, I have a bank statement from Enterprise, which is one of the most prestigious and well-known banking in the area, that shows $286,000 in the account. I have $24,000 in checks. I have another additional $4,000 in PayPal. And I have $11,000 that has already been paid out to the engineering firm. Grand total, 326 in the bank.
My next question is, to the athletic director, you listed a litany of towns that have turf fields. And part of the equation for our town is to sell naming rights. Could you tell me the names of the fields in those other towns? Did they sell naming rights in those other towns?
I can't tell you the answer to that, but that's not in our calculations.
I believe that part of the list of things tonight, part of it said naming rights. Maybe I misheard something.
No, Fran, you actually saw it there in terms of potential revenue generation. Where these schools would rest, I'm sorry, where these fields would rest on school property, it would be at the discretion of the school committee in terms of allowing naming rights. And you asked, and you asked for, are there any other fields in the area? Haverhill, I believe.
We have a gentleman here.
We have a gentleman.
A town resident.
A town resident, Mr. Chemley, is involved in naming rights in another community and perhaps would let him speak to that.
Would that person raise their hands like?
He's right here.
Good evening. My name is John Chemley, two Douglas Road in Chelmsford. Fran, to answer that particular question, the Haverhill Stadium is actually called Trinity Stadium.
What was that?
It's called Trinity Stadium.
Oh.
But I understand about Mr. Simonian and Simonian Field, we did the same thing in Haverhill, a gentleman named McNamara, that was very, very integral to the city of Haverhill. And what we decided to do was name Trinity Stadium, it was the Harold J. McNamara Field at Trinity Stadium. So Simonian is, his name would be there, whoever naming rights choose that. We are paying right now $25,000 a year for three years to have that naming right.
And you knew, no, whatever you do, it's all right with me. All right. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that we know where we're coming from on that particular item where you're expecting some income.
Thank you.
I wasn't quite clear. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, Bill Griffin, precinct nine, through you to the various speakers. A couple of the questions that have come to mind from me after the presentation and Paul, or I'd appreciate your replies on these. One of the things I'm hearing is that the we're going to try and rent these out for payback and stuff. What I'd like to understand is, how will that, the availability of usage be maintained and capped so that the community at large, because this is a community preservation activity, will always have the lion's share of availability and access to these fields as opposed to being locked out by functions and tournaments? That's the first question. Who will administer that?
I'll answer that. So from that presentation, this is why we only chose one-third of the hours to be rentable. We believe that after you use those two-thirds of those hours, that's more than enough time for our community to use the hours. Again, the school's already taken their piece of the pie. So now you're looking at the total hours left after that. Two-thirds of them are going towards the community. One-third would be available for rentals. We believe that it's probably going to end up being rented more than that because I don't believe the community can actually use all two-thirds of the hours. I could be wrong. When we sit down and schedule it all out, we'll see more, but I'm pretty certain.
Mr. Moderator, I'd ask you to bear with me for just a clarification. I'd like to understand the mechanism that will be in place to cap that so that there is always some time available for the community. What is the circuit breaker that will prevent it from being overbooked?
It would end up being reported to the school committee on a, you know, sit-down basis. I'd sit down with all the youth organizations and we'd do the schedules together before we ever rented it out.
Okay. Second question I have is, the fields on, that border Richardson Road, Greenwich Village Road, where our teams currently all practice, the vast majority of your fall sports teams practice on the fields that your youth organizations for baseball are paying to maintain. I'd like to understand what plans are in place to take the load off those practice fields so that the, your organizations that are paying to maintain those fields don't have to go back and repair that practice damage going forward? And are there plans to update that service, surface for the balances of those other organizations that play on those fields?
That's a good question. So when the, hopefully, if these turf fields come to us, then we'll be able to practice on those fields as well. So we'll be able to rotate the usage of those fields. This is what we try to do currently. It's very hard. So, you know, one field at a time or two fields at a time would be rested, all right, rehabbed by our maintenance crew. Currently, when you talk about baseball and softball organizations, they take care of those fields because they use them. We use the grass areas for football, field hockey, soccer, things like lacrosse. So now we'd be able to rotate the usage through those fields and be able to rest them appropriately and work on them more appropriately. So that's a good question.
Thank you.
Next.
Karen Kowalski, precinct one. I have to ask this. As far as the Community Preservation Funds go, there was a regulation in June of 2012 that the CPA funds for installation of artificial turf at recreational sites is prohibited. Did I hear Bob say that we're going to use the funds for installation? Installation of artificial turf prohibited?
It's the, the language is the acquisition of artificial turf?
I see that on another page, acquisition. But then, could we have our town attorney do an interpretation?
So this is from chapter 44B, the change to it. With respect to recreational use, the acquisition of artificial turf for athletic fields shall be prohibited.
I have here, chapter 139, section 69-83, 155, and 218. Can I just have the attorney interpret it? Or do you want me to read it?
Well, is this the, has changed during the, has changed during the summer?
This was as of June 2012. Did it change since then?
It's the same regulation she's talking about.
Okay. I mean, this is, this is right out of it too, so.
You have a question for town council?
Yes.
Mr. Moderator, through you to the previous speaker. The Community Preservation Act was amended. I think it took effect on July 1st of last year. And it prohibits the use of CPA funds for the acquisition of artificial turf.
Can I just show you what this says? June?
I'm happy to look at it.
Yeah, please.
I can also check the statute if you'd like and then we can have a-
Okay. Can I bring it to you?
Sure. But I would just point out that what I understood was that there's $1.2 million of CPA money. None of that can be used to purchase the-
Correct.
-the artificial turf. There's an additional $800,000 that's being borrowed pursuant to the town's general borrowing authority, and that will not be paid back with CPA funds. And my understanding is the intent is to use the $800,000 to purchase the turf material.
Okay.
The, and no CPA funds will be used to actually, will not go towards the purchase of the artificial turf. So in my opinion, this warrant article complies with the new law.
Do we have a breakdown of where the money's going for the, from the Community Preservation Fund for the turf field?
What was the question?
Do we have a breakdown of where the money's going?
Well, yeah.
Can I, can I just show you?
Do you want to ask a question?
Hi, Nick DeSilvio, School Committee. I have a breakdown here that Whitman and Bigum put together. This is not, these are not the final numbers because we actually get that from when the bids actually come in. But the estimated cost right now for the turf fields for both Simonian Stadium and McCarthy Field come out to about 900, roughly about $950,000. So, so the plan is that the $800,000 and then a portion of the $500,000 private money will be used to purchase the turf itself.
And to install it?
I'm sorry?
And to install it?
And to install it, correct.
Same thing? Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Peggy Dunn, precinct one. Mr. Moderator, through you. I just want to, Mr. Moreau, on your rentals, I just want to double check. Are non-scholastic teams like lacrosse players, et cetera, are they being charged to rent the fees?
Not that-
Rental fees, rather, to play on the fields, on the new fields, if we get them?
Not at this point, no.
Okay. And that's for all the non-school-related teams?
Correct.
They'll be able to use them freely?
Correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have one, I have one more question, not for you, Mr. Moreau. It's on the fundraising. If I heard correctly and understood correctly, the amount you quoted was $350,000. Is that correct?
No, ma'am, it was not. It was 326.
I'm sorry?
No, ma'am, it was not. It was 326.
Eight hundred and twenty? Yeah, okay. Or 326.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. But that is not 500,000.
No, ma'am. The goal was, and what the committee asked was to have $250,000 at the beginning of town meeting. So not only did we get to 250, but we're already at 326. And then the balance of the money would be in by June. And we have commitments in place for the balance of the money, ma'am.
That was-
No arguing. If that's your answer.
I'm not, I'm not going to ask Mr. Cohen if he will-
No, you had two questions. You've asked two questions.
Bob Joyce, precinct one. Will this project be put out to bid? Yes. Yes.
And will there be a separate RFP, a bid, for the turf material and the installation and a separate bid for the preparation of the grounds?
No, it's one bid.
That's it?
That's it.
Next.
Andy Sillings, precinct seven. Several in town have asked me what the studies show. Well, because kids' health is so important now, what do the studies show as far as ankle, knee injuries, or head injuries compared to natural grass?
It's far less in terms of injuries on the synthetic fields than it is for the natural surfaces.
Thank you.
Sue Dandera, precinct nine. I'm just trying to understand the total debt service to the town annually. So the Community Preservation Fund of 1.2 million, Bob has just said that's about a 15-year bond and that's about $109,000 a year. And the 800 bond to the town, how much is that going to be annually?
That will be borrowed over a 10-year period. It'll be about approximately $100,000 per year.
So $100,000 and we're projecting at least $150,000 using one-third of the time-
Yes.
-that we've projected. Okay. The, this might be a question for Bob. Our two town halls, what's the total bond on that?
I believe it was 2.875 million dollars.
Okay. And that's in Article 12, we say $2.8 million. And the annual debt service on that is about 350, 360, 350, 360,000 dollars?
It was over a 10-year period.
Do we-
That's two.
I just have one more.
Yes. Look. Motion? Come up to the microphone and make it, please. You don't need a second, but he does have to come up to the microphone and make it.
Mr. Moderator, Bill Griffin, precinct nine. I'd like you to put a motion in front of the body or query the body, because this is an item of some import, to increase the latitude of the questions from two to four per speaker. Thank you.
The motion before the body, I'm just going to, to increase the limit on questions from two to four. All in favor, raise your tickets. Opposed? Okay, you got four questions.
Peggy Dunn, precinct one. Mr. Moderator, through you. I have one more question. I count about 30, 13 communities surrounding us going to have or already have turf fields. I'm assuming there's a finite number of people out there that are going to be renting them. And will we be running into any problem of not being able to find people to rent our fields?
Yeah, somebody asked that. Yikes. First off, many of the communities didn't have to go through a process like we're going through, borrowing money to put the fields in so they're not renting them. They don't need to. Secondly, we've had conversations already with those communities and they're getting overflowed with questions about renting their fields. And we feel, you know, pretty confident that those numbers are pretty accurate. Possibly, I think they're going to get bigger personally, but like I said, we wanted to be pretty conservative.
Okay. Thank you. I have a question for Paul. Mr. Lopoli just stated that there was an understanding or something to that effect, that if less than the $500,000 was raised, or the 350 was raised, that that would be okay. And that, I don't remember ever receiving that information.
What we've come across is there are a number of people who are going to contribute and support the project, but they are reluctant to release the funds until they see the town's commitment for this project. And I believe that's what Mr. Lopoli said this evening is, the other money is committed and will be released once the town votes to approve this project. Because people are reluctant, some are reluctant to let the monies go until they know this is really going to be a reality. Because their concern would be they give the money and it doesn't happen, where does that money go?
happen, where does that money go? What happens to those monies?
Certainly.
So I think that's what's going on, but if this vote is approved, again, as I noted at the Finance Committee and at the Information Session and so forth, the town cannot sign a contract for construction without the monies on hand, because when we sign a contract, and it is publicly bid, and bids are out there right now, that when the contract is signed, it's signed not only by me with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, but it also is signed by Town Council for Legal Form, but it also is signed by the Town Accountant for the certification of funds. Because it has to be the certification of funds available to move forward with construction. So that is the assurance that the monies will be there in order to build the fields.
Right, well, that's exactly why I was asking the question, because that's what I understood, that it could not go forward before the $500,000 was in the bank.
And as we're talking about, we're anticipating construction after graduation in the first week of June, and we are, those funds will be present and construction will commence.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. You have four new questions.
Well, this is my third and final question. So the, this is on the town halls, actually, the 2.8 million dollar bond that we service at about 350,000 a year. Does the town receive rental income from the town halls, and approximately what is that number?
Let me answer that question. We have the two town halls, North Town Hall and Center Town Hall. The town does not receive any rental payments from those two town halls. The agreement we have with the Chelmsford Center for the Arts and the Chelmsford Community Center is that those groups are responsible for the operational costs of the building. Heat, lights, air conditioning, custodial services. The town maintains responsibility for the physical infrastructure of those buildings. We have, those funds go through the town through the, same thing, a dedicated revolving fund, and I'm pleased to report that after, you know, going through a full year of that, that both of those projects are in the black, are meeting their operational costs, but the town general fund and the town as a whole does not receive any revenue from the rental or use of those two facilities.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Beth Logan, Precinct Three, only one question if you get the answer right. Given that 40 years later, there's still lawsuits over Title IX, and given that this is being paid for by taxpayer dollars, what is, what are you guys going to do to ensure that women's sports get equal use of the fields and it doesn't become a 24/7 Pop Warner football field?
That's my job, and I work hard to do that currently, to make sure that we have ample opportunity for all our programs and make sure that everybody gets equal opportunity.
So, do the women's sports get the same time on the fields, on the better fields today?
Yes. Yes. So currently, the Simonton Stadium is used for all our fall sports, so we have as many female programs as we have as male programs.
Brian Lotina, Precinct Four. My question is around the rental fees. You used a linear fee calculation, and obvious to me, Saturday at 10 o'clock is more valuable than 6:00 AM on a January morning on a Sunday. Is there any thought to looking at prime time relative to Chelmsford residents, or our school kids? I mean, how are you blocking these things off? And is it a committee, or is it our school committee that would vote on setting a schedule, let's say, for the summer?
So the school comes first on the field, so the school committee would, I guess, approve the usage of those fields?
Vote.
And vote on that?
And fees? You used a linear calculation, there was no thought about valuable times compared to off-times?
Yeah, there wasn't any thought about off-peak and peak times or anything like that, it was a straight calculation for a number of hours that we had to rent the field.
Okay. The McCarthy Field, a couple springs ago, was under about four feet of water with the river running across the road above it, there's a huge rock face on it. Town meeting, last town meeting, we tried to set a drainage easement across some property, I guess that was not done. Does this calculation have a, I'm going to call it a waterfall drainage system mechanism in it? Are you, do you have money in it for that huge water dump that comes through there in the springtime so it doesn't wash away?
These fields are designed with an underdrain system as part of the turf system, as well as they'll be keeping most of the infrastructure that's already there going around the perimeter of the field and the track area. So to answer your question, yes, it has been looked at, and it's part of the design.
So it could handle three feet of water on it for about a week? That's what happened.
I'm not saying it can handle three feet of water for about a week, but there is infrastructure in place to handle, you know, the normal flows that that field will see.
Okay, and I think my fourth question, maintenance. Looking at the McCarthy picture there, I believe there's some, there's definitely some trashing of the field because people are using the center of the field, but it's obvious to me the maintenance was severely either underestimated or beyond our expertise or nonexistent. The budget for maintenance in our buildings is difficult, our streets have potholes, we're about to put in a two and a half, three million dollar set of fields that are going to last 20 years. What's the maintenance budget behind this thing? Or is it zero?
The maintenance budget for the town, my understanding from the town manager, is not going to change. In terms of what you're going to be looking at, Brian, is our maintenance folks will be spending actually less time on the turf field. They still will be providing the maintenance, the same that they do for every field in town. And with that less amount of time there, they'll be able to work on other fields. You know, I think you heard Scott mention, and perhaps you heard me mention earlier, is that the upkeep of the fields has been happening, you know, particularly at the McCarthy, at the McCarthy Field. We rested that for an entire year last year to have it looking nice and ready to go. I don't know much about the growing of grass, I know now that it takes more than one year. But our inability to rest it for a couple of years for the grass to take root hasn't happened. So, you know, what you see in the middle of the field, we saw this year after the turf was fine over the summer, after a few football games right in the middle of the field, it was torn up.
This wasn't for show, we didn't stop maintenance this last year.
Oh.
It was, it was a...
No, because Brian, what you would do is, is you would put children at risk. So at no time would anybody, through the municipality, through the school side, or the athletic department, would ever do that.
Our maintenance for this year was the same as last year's, which is...
Yes.
Thank you, next.
Bob Joyce, Precinct One. Currently, the 324,000, 26,000 plus whatever's in Sal's pocket, who has control of that money right now?
All checks, all funds go to the Booster Club run by President James Young. Every quarter goes through the Booster Fund.
You had mentioned that, Paul, the town manager had mentioned that people are holding back, kind of like the chicken and the egg here, we're going to see if town meeting passes it, and then we'll give our money. How much money does that represent?
Well, we have, we were asked to come up with 250,000 by town meeting, and now we have 326,000. So there's approximately 170 and change left that people are holding back that have already given commitments.
So I don't think I understood the answer to that question. Of the 350,000, in order to make the next 150, are those the people that are holding back on giving checks? And then what does that represent?
Those are the people holding back, Bob.
Okay, and does it represent the entire 150?
Yes, it does.
Thank you.
Will Wagner, Precinct Eight. Just one question of clarification. One of the advantages was that you were going to improve the ability of the other town fields to rest and recover from usage. So the goal is to absorb things like the girls' lacrosse, girls' field hockey, Chelmsford youth soccer into the new fields?
Joey Ann Anderson, Precinct Six. Just a couple quick questions on the funding amounts. Now, if the Community Preservation Fund, it's 1.2 million, did I hear that right? It would get paid back over 15 years? But the lifetime of the artificial turf is 10 years? Or is it 15 years? What's the lifetime of the artificial turf again?
Right. The artificial turf, we estimate, will go at least 12 to 15 years with the current products. But remember, the Community Preservation monies will not be expended on the turf surface.
On the turf itself, okay.
It cannot be done. What will happen is when the bids come in, because this goes to an earlier question, there will be a schedule of values for the construction. It will delineate how much is, materials are for the turf surface, how much is for piping and rock and so forth. So we'll be able to specifically identify which costs are going to Community Preservation Fund, and which costs are going to the, to the other funds, the half million in private funds, as well as the 800 in general borrowing.
And the bond of 800,000, that's going back over 10 years?
We borrow over a 10-year period. 10-year period.
So that should be paid off before this artificial turf is ever...
Yes, exactly. And there'll be that sinking fund.
Are all these, are the youth organizations on board with increasing their fees to pay towards the artificial turf, since it mentioned here that there were possible increased user fees? Are they on board with that?
At this point, I think Scott mentioned that there were going to be no increased user fees, but all the youth groups are on board and have contributed to this fund.
Oh, okay, because in, in here it says paid back through revenues from rentals, naming rights, it does say possible increased user fees, and then in parentheses it says youth organization. So there's a potential that everybody's fees are going to end up going up in the end. Okay. That's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
Next.
Nancy Arroway, Precinct One. I think I have two questions. What is the typical annual usage events for these fields today versus what do you expect the number of usage events to be in the future with the turf?
See if I could click back to a slide earlier in the presentation that we tried to show that. Okay, so that is McCarthy Field, last fall, the actual is on the left, and the potential is on the right, if you had turf.
So it's like...
So the actual times we used McCarthy.
Ten times or 20 times?
Last fall, that's just one month, it was used one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine times in the month of October, and you can see it would be used every day in the month of October next year.
So it's about, I don't know, 10, 10, 15 times as much usage?
Yeah, I mean, you got, do the, 36 total hours to 247 total hours in that one month.
Okay.
Approximately seven times.
So one of your slides says that, that the fields will be available 24/7. So with this much extra usage, what is the traffic impact and the lighting impact to the neighborhoods?
There is, there should be no impact. No, the lighting won't go off the site of the property.
And there won't be any extra traffic from those extra events?
I wouldn't say neighborhoods, but certainly in the parking lots of the schools and at the schools, there'll be plenty more traffic.
Ken Cialli, Precinct Six. Got a question, we were talking about earlier, we're going to rent these out for, you know, a third of the hours, and you get so much money, we're going to use that to service the debt. Let's go on the upside. You rent a lot more than that, you get a lot more money. What happens with the surplus over and above what you're planning to pay the, pay the service debt down with?
It goes right into the sinking fund, the revolving, the revolving fund.
So you use that to continue to pay, you're going to, you're going to accelerate the payment against the debt? Or is it just going to go into a regular account and you just use it anywhere?
It wouldn't, no, it would go towards the debt.
Okay, so you accelerate the debt reduction.
It will stay in the fund, you cannot accelerate the debt, it would stay in the fund for the fields.
So you couldn't, so you couldn't pay this, this 800,000 off early?
No. I guess, I'm hearing you can't do that with a bond. I don't know if I should be answering this question.
Okay, seeing no one else queued up for questions, does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Board of Selectmen.
The Board of Selectmen recommends approval.
School Committee.
The School Committee recommends approval.
Okay, we are going into the debate portion, which means any resident can speak. Now, there are two microphones up here, and there should be two lines. Those that are in favor get behind the green microphone, those that are against get behind the microphone, the red microphone, and... I will not cut off debate. If somebody moves the question, it's only the town meeting that will cut off debate. So let's start with the green microphone.
Mr. Moderator, point of order.
Yes. Go up to the microphone and make your point.
Mr. Moderator, Chris Rose, Precinct Five.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to limit debate to one hour, please.
We have a motion to limit debate to one hour. All those in favor, raise your tickets. All those opposed, raise your tickets. Motion passes, debate will stop at 11:14.
Okay, let's go.
Go.
Karen DiDonato, Precinct Eight. I'm in favor of this, I've been looking for turf fields for quite a number of years. As Bob Morse quite knows, I keep asking him, why can't we spend Community Preservation Act monies? I think it's been, it's a very well-structured plan that they've brought towards us. I like the idea of using Community Preservation Funds as well as bonding, as well as community fundraising, and I think the community will probably come out in twofold, is what we see. I would just like to read, my daughter couldn't come here tonight, but I want to at least read an email that she sent regarding this. My name is Lisa DiDonato, and I'm a 2008 graduate of Chelmsford High School. I graduated CHS and went on to the University of Connecticut where I graduated last year. I was a three-sport athlete at CHS. I was the captain of the CHS field hockey team when I was a senior. I remember being in high school five years ago and talking about how Chelmsford High was hoping to get a turf field soon, and I even thought that I might even be able to see it in high school when I was there and try to enjoy it. However, five years later, there's still no turf field. I feel very strongly that having a turf field is extremely important to CHS athletics. The game of field hockey is a completely different sport on turf versus grass. Running, hitting, the speed of the ball, and playing defense are all dependent on the surface of play. Our regular season games against our biggest competitors, Andover, Acton, Boxborough, and North Andover, were all on turf fields. These teams practiced on turf, and we practiced on grass, putting us at a huge disadvantage. To prepare for the state tournament, we would pay to use UMass Lowell's turf field to practice for our games, because all Massachusetts State Tournament field hockey games are played on turf, and we needed to be ready. Not providing Chelmsford athletes with turf fields puts them at a disadvantage to compete at the collegiate level. I went on to play club field hockey at the University of Connecticut where everything was on turf. It's 2013, and these sports are now played on turf fields, and that is the norm. I live in Chelmsford again, and as a Chelmsford resident and former CHS alumni, I'd be very disappointed to see the turf field be put off another five years. Chelmsford is behind the times with this, and getting a turf field to the athletes of Chelmsford will benefit the high school for years to come. I support this one.
Red microphone.
Thomas Fall, Precinct Five. And all due respect to the speakers, I heard something up there earlier that I am very concerned about. I happened to go online this morning to the FIFA website, which is International Soccer Association, and they have done studies along, I believe, with the National Football League that have come out and said that there is an increase in, in injuries for knees and ankles. So I do take exception to that comment that was made earlier about there would be less injuries.
Thank you. Green microphone, are you a town meeting rep?
I know.
Just name and address.
It's John Gump.
Raise the microphone.
Can I raise this? Don't stand too close to it. It's John Gump, I'm at Five Bentes Place. I just have a statement on behalf of Chelmsford Youth Lacrosse. Can you give me a minute? My name is John Gump, I live at Five Bentes Place here in Chelmsford. I'm the president of the Chelmsford Youth Lacrosse Association, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Board of Directors. I have been involved with Chelmsford Youth Lacrosse for 18 years. I got involved immediately... I got involved immediately when I moved to the town before my wife and I had the first of our four children. I've watched our program develop and expand from three teams to over eleven, twelve teams at this point. And personally, it's been very enjoyable to watch the kids develop their games and move on to play at the highest levels. We have a number of athletes in town that are currently playing at the Division One, Two, or Three level, who began in the Chelmsford Youth Lacrosse program, both on the boys and the girls' side. Basically, with the number of athletes we have in the program at this point, both on the boys and the girls' side, we are experiencing a problem with the grass services. They cannot support the number of hours that are needed for all the various sports. They are in such poor shape that currently, we had two programs on the boys' side come to us and say they would no longer, they would not play their seventh or eighth grade team here in Chelmsford. They felt that we were endangering their kids. This was personally embarrassing. These were true, they happened to be two friends of mine, so maybe they went to me directly, but they felt that the current shape of the McCarthy Field, they would not put their seventh or eighth graders on that field. So, basically, place our kids in jeopardy. Last year, the McCarthy Field was shut down for the spring for repair, and that, basically, that repair lasted a few months into the Pop Warner season. Now the field at this point is in the worst shape. I've seen it in the eighteen years I've been down there. This is nothing personal. I'm not trying to attack anybody. It's just at this point, it's literally dust in certain places. The grass is being torn up. I mean, the kids like to throw the dirt in the eyes. It's getting to a point where we're literally having to move around to find grass in certain That said, the state of the field, as most of our neighbors, basically what we're asking for, like several of our neighbors, is to basically go forward with this turf field. Having turf fields is no longer a privilege of a few wealthy towns that could afford them at one point. It's now a necessity. So we're asking that the folks support both the youth and the high school programs as the Chelmsford Youth Board of Directors at this title, at this meeting, to support Article Eighteen with a yes vote, and I want to thank you for the time.
Thank you.
I attend a lot of meetings in town because I want to be knowledgeable, knowledgeable about these things, and in January I attended the meeting of the Preservation Committee where the town accountant came in and made a presentation to the CPC about their debt levels and that type of thing. And there were no press in the room. It was not televised, but I recall clearly that she warned the CPC that they were getting dangerously close on borrowing money, and I understand that the Housing Authority is also looking for a certain amount of money, too. So that comes to mind, and I don't know, what it does to us is it puts us in a position where we can never change our rate, because if we get leveraged so high to the point where it would take too long to pay the debt off, then you couldn't reduce the rate. In Drake, they're talking about reducing the rate, and while I supported going to one and a half percent several years back, as a town meeting rep, I supported it. At that time, it was housing, it was open space, and it was historical, and I could vote for that, but this type of thing I can't. Let me start by saying that the committee who has done this proposal has done an outstanding job and they deserve credit for this, but that is not the issue here. The issue is whether or not the taxpayers can afford it. I know that some of it is coming from CPC, which is taxpayers' money, by the way, and that it will be absorbed into the capital debt structure of the town through the capital budget and replacing old debt so that there is no new debt. I get that, but if we didn't fund this in existing debt, our budget for debt could go down and provide tax breaks for the many senior citizens and borderline struggling taxpayers in town. I have heard the argument that it will pay for itself through recovery of fees for using the fields, but have not seen comparative analysis of other towns and what they collect until tonight, we've just seen Acton. The figures that are provided seem to be pie in the sky and what-ifs, for instance, seven by twenty-four. The analysis of how many benefit from this, I feel, are grossly exaggerated. If you consider that taxpayers with school-aged children runs about fifteen to twenty percent, and of that amount, probably less than fifty percent play in organized sports, both schools and private, it brings the participants way down. Most athletes in the schools, in the school programs, play multiple-season sports, so those kids should be counted as one, not three. I do accept that others, adults, will benefit from a nice track at McCarthy, but I don't see that number as huge. I believe that it is fiscally irresponsible for the town to fund this project at this time. There are lots of taxpayers in town that are struggling to pay their taxes and provide for their families, many of those on the committee and others who support this proposal are not in this situation. Within the next few years, we are looking at possible increases in Massachusetts income taxes to support statewide projects that will not benefit us. Transportation. We have no control over state spending, but we do have control over spending three-point-one million on turf fields. Please think about the burden this places on the entire town. What do I propose? Town meeting should vote down any appropriations for this project and do more investigation into the need and the ability to fund it. I would like to see a town-wide referendum vote on the issue, whether it includes a prop two-and-a-half debt exemption or the use of CPC and other capital funds. If it is such a good idea, let everyone vote. My second proposal, and a proposal I haven't heard by any of the proponents, would be leasing the space at both fields for a period of ten years and take proposals from private companies to develop the turf fields and rent the space to athletic groups, including the town of Chelmsford. If it is such a financial windfall, as stated, a private company could do well and provide jobs as well. The reason I picked ten years is that normal life of a turf field is about ten years. A developer like Mr. Lopoli could make this a huge success and provide something to the town. Think long and hard on this project. It will have far-reaching effects on our town. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
My name is Alan Thomas, Precinct Five. Also on the School Committee and the Turf Committee. I've been a town meeting rep since Representative Town Meeting started and I attended town meetings before that. As some of you are probably aware, I seldom speak to this body. There are always people to speak. However, tonight, I sincerely want to address the body. We need to support the turf field project. We don't have enough playing fields and we can't properly care for the fields that we have. There's also a health and safety issue that must be addressed. At McCarthy, when the winds blow, the dirt blows into the players' eyes and noses, and when it rains, it's a mud bath, and no matter what the weather is, there are holes all over the field. At Chelmsford High School, thanks to a lot of hard work, the field looks pretty good in September, but after fifty or sixty contests, the field's pretty well chewed up. The field's treated and rested until the next fall. Some have asked, if the football team only plays five or six home games and it isn't used in the winter or the spring by anyone, why do we need a new turf field? I'll remind you what I just said. In the fall, there are fifty or sixty games played there. Well, how do you get that? It's pretty easy. The Boys and Girls Varsity and Junior Varsity soccer teams play there. The Boys and Girls Varsity and Junior Varsity, drawing a blank. Yeah, soccer. All those soccer teams play there, and both the Varsity and Junior Varsity field hockey teams play there. Our community deserves better. We should not be embarrassed by our facilities. If you talk to the athletic... If you talk to our athletic director, he'll tell you that there are some schools that are discussing the possibility of not coming to Chelmsford to play because the conditions are so bad. We should not put our young people at risk by having them play on unacceptable surfaces. Some of Chelmsford's citizens have decided to do something about this situation. They've raised funds through a kickoff party, a comedy show, a race, a walkathon, comedy, I said that. We've raffled a motorcycle. They've sought donations from businessmen, organizations, and individuals and have raised over three-hundred thousand dollars. Any of you have raised money? It's tough enough to raise twenty thousand. Three-hundred thousand is a real challenge, as we've found, but it's being done. We have commitments, and I hope you listen closely to what that was said. In hand, the people have gone out and have commitments. It's going to be there. All we have to do is tell them that we're going to do it. There's still a golf tournament, a casino night, and other fundraisers, so there may be more money coming in. There will be more money coming in. These same people investigated the potential revenues that can be generated from the fields. They've used a fraction of the available rental time in a conservative per-hour fee scale. It's clear that we can make the payments on the bond that's part of this plan. We have a clear need. We have citizens who have worked hard to successfully address that need. Town meeting should not block the construction of these fields. They should enthusiastically support their construction. When principal of Chelmsford High School, I started most days by telling the students to make it a good day if not. Tonight, let's make it a good day. Almost every time I spoke at Chelmsford High School, I told the students there and their parents and friends that Chelmsford High School is a great high school. The reason being that we are good across the board. There are some schools that are better than we are in one or two things, but few are better than we are across the board. And likewise, Chelmsford's a great town and our citizens deserve quality facilities and therefore, we need to support this plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, Laura Merrill, District Two. And I understand that everyone here has really worked hard, and I do appreciate that there is a need in this community for these fields, but I, too, am concerned with the fiscal responsibility of this town, and I've got a lot of years here, and I would like to see us start to get more control of our spending, not just continue to go for things just because it looks like a great idea. I heard an argument earlier that the girls' field hockey team had to go to UMass Lowell to practice for a state tournament. My response to that was, what a wonderful opportunity for the girls to get to visit a university campus, help them get an idea of what that's like. Right now, we keep hearing a lot about the safety issue, and I want to know if this is really kind of a scare tactic, because the reality is that these are very dangerous compact sports the kids are playing. Football, soccer, field hockey. My son came home, said he wanted to play lacrosse, and I don't know that the turf is actually causing a majority of the injuries that we are maybe seeing with the students. I have, I don't think that the quality of the field makes me less proud to be a Chelmsford resident, and I think that the students have done a remarkable job with the turf that they have right now. I think that more money should be spent towards their education and not worry about that. If you look at today's athletes, a large percentage of the world's total premier athletes are coming out of some of the poorest neighborhoods and the poorest countries in the world, and it doesn't seem to affect their playing ability. I have, I was in Club Men Dominican Republic last week, and my lifeguard was heading a ninety-five mile an hour fast pitch.
Excuse me. Let's keep the whispering to a minimum and give each speaker the same respect, whether you agree with them or not. Continue.
Another comment I heard this evening was that we'll be able to charge fees for our fields, and I personally don't want to start paying fees to go visit my kids' sports activities. I find that a little offensive when I go to other towns and have to pay a fee. And I think just, once we set the precedent that we have these turf fields on these two fields, what are we going to do with all of the other fields? I know that Parker has a terrible field and there's a lot more play going on for, say, the Pop Warner team weekly on that field versus the games on once a week. So are we going to have to turn around and add more turf fields to the budgets in coming years? These are all concerns with me. I'm glad that we raised a ton of money for this, but I'm a little saddened that we didn't raise so much money for the fire station project over the last few years. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Polton.
Sam Polton, Precinct Eight.
Stand back a little bit, Sam.
You enjoyed saying that, I know that.
No, 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 no.
Sam Polton, Precinct Eight. I move to call the question.
Motion to call the question has been made. It's not debatable. Requires a two-thirds vote.
It's Silvio's speaker first.
We will go to the electronic ballot for this one. You're voting on calling, moving the question. The yeses were ninety-one, the nos were forty-nine, the four abstentions do not count. To me, it looks like it failed.
My name is Frank DeSilvio. I live at Four Coach Road in Chelmsford. I am proud to say that I'm graduating from Chelmsford High School in June this year. I'll never play on the turf fields that are being proposed, but I would like to share you, share with you a story. Two years ago, I was working with one of our football coaches running pass patterns. As I ran down the field, I was supposed to change directions and run to the corner. As I tried to make my cut and pivot, the loose ground and grass gave way. My body went to the right and my leg, from my knee down, went to the left. My kneecap was ninety degrees from where it was supposed to be. I dislocated my patella and had to have reconstruction of my kneecap. I had one surgery and I'm expected to have another in the future, in the future after all the growth plates are done growing. It was very painful and the injury took a long time to recover from. I understood the risks of playing sports, but the surgeon asked what kind of surface we played on. When I told him grass, he told me he wasn't surprised. This was very common... This was very common, this was a very common injury on grass fields along with MCL and ACL tears. He also stated that there was a very good chance that this injury would never, would have occurred if I was playing on a controlled surface, or better known as turf. That's why I ask you tonight to support the turf field project, so what happened to me doesn't happen to my younger brothers, sisters, or other student athletes or visiting teams. Thank you for letting me share my story. Thank you for a great education.
Chris Garahan, Precinct Eight, I again move the question.
Motion to move the question. Now, I'm going to ask all you people in line to somehow get out of the way because you're blocking the voting. This takes again, two-thirds. I might add, there are five or six people waiting to speak, so consider that when you vote. Okay, it's 115 yes, no 24, one abstention which doesn't count, and it's obviously a two-thirds majority. So now, we will vote on the question. And the question is, Article 18 would appropriate $1.2 million in CPC funds and authorize the borrowing of $800,000 for synthetic recreational fields at McCarthy Middle School and Seminum Stadium at Chelmsford High School. Again, this requires a two-thirds majority vote. Soon as the number 35 comes up, you can start voting.
Only 13 abstentions.
Okay, the votes are yes 128, no 13, seven abstentions which do not count, and so it's a clear two-thirds majority victory. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, people.
And now we move on to Article 13. I have a motion, a standing motion, to waive the reading on Article 13. And this will be presented by, well, the motion's by James Lane. James, you've changed.
My name is, hey, it was a great victory. Celebrate outside, please. Bob Morse, Chairman of the Community Preservation Committee. This is Article 13. This is to rescind unused CPC appropriations. So the first part of it is, to rescind, I think we're, yeah, we're back. First part is to rescind $1,678 for the, that was used for the Lime Quarry. The account was for the Lime Quarry parking area. It was originally a $10,000 account, and this is the remainder of the project's done. The area is no longer, looks like a truck pullover area. It's a true conservation area, so that's, that remaining amount can be rescinded. Next is $10,835, which is actually tied to another article, Article 15. This is for the Red Wing Farm parking lot. That project was, the majority of it was done well under the original amount of $25,000 that was set aside. It was Brian Reedy, who was on the Conservation Commission, donated his labor and equipment, and so there was $10,835 remaining. There is another article that will appropriate a bit more to do some more work on the parking lot, but we'll, we'll come to that article. Next is $306,938, which was for the affordable housing. It was for the Brianna Lynn complex on Richardson Road, which at the time was, had, was up for auction. And the Housing Authority was responding by looking into purchasing Brianna Lynn with that money and other funding. The auction was called off. The management situation improved there, and basically, there's not seen as any opportunity for, for purchase of the Brianna Lynn complex, so we're asking that amount be rescinded And last is $62,500, also under the, under affordable housing. That was being used for buying down to an affordable rate, units at the Courtyard Condominiums. There's really no more action there. There's, has always been the issue of the discount rate of 0% at the Courtyard Condominiums there. Made it difficult to, to find anyone who would purchase the, the units at an affordable rate when they could really purchase a, units with no restrictions for pretty much the same. So we're asking that, that also be rescinded. That's it. Questions?
Questions?
Ryan Latina, Precinct Four. This money we're rescinding was set aside at 10% in each category. Is this money restricted to the categories that we originally set them to, or was that 10% hit already?
It's, it's being returned to the, from where it came, so if it came from a specific category, it will go back to that specific category. If part of it was beyond that category, which, like the affordable housing account, it would be returned to the Community Preservation General Fund.
Are we in violation of pay, we're supposed to spend 10% each year. Does this violate that rule?
The requirement is to either set aside or spend, so that 10% that was set aside is going to be returned to the specific account, so that, the portion of each one that was part of that 10% is being returned to the specific account.
Thank you. Any more questions? Seeing none. Recommendation from the Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Board of Selectmen.
Board of Selectmen recommends approval.
Okay, we're in the debate portion. Any debate? Seeing nobody queued up, let's take a vote. The yeses are 136, and the nos are 1 with two abstention. Article passes. Article 14. Board of Selectmen representative to the Community Preservation Committee, James M. Lane, Jr., moves that the town appropriate $50,000 from the Community Preservation Fund General Reserve for the rehabilitation and restoration of land for recreational use, including a replacement of playground equipment and other capital improvements to the land or the facilities thereon which make the land or the related facilities more functional for their intended recreational purposes.
The reason for the creation of this fund is, as we've been discussing in the Synthetic Fields article, there's now the ability to use recreational, Community Preservation, recreational funds for projects that aren't just on land that was purchased with the Community Preservation Fund, so it can be used on any, any town-owned property. We already had one application for playground improvements, and rather than come to you with small projects for playground improvements, we thought it would be a good idea to start a, a capital account, just a fund that we put, in this case, $50,000 in, and set up some rules for the use. We wouldn't want to see any application for more than $10,000. We want to see a certain degree of matching funds. And for applicants who are coming to, want to improve, add new equipment to existing playgrounds, of which we have all the schools, South Row, Byham Center, Harrington, there's Friendship Park, Ronnie Park, McCarthy Skateboard Park, Ponce Creek Playground, and, and others. This will give a, an avenue for making improvements to those playgrounds without having to come to town meeting for each and every one of them.
Tom Fall, Precinct Five. Mr. Morse, on this money, would, when these improvements are made, would they be handicap accessible? Would that be one of the provisions they would have to use, part of that money to make these playgrounds handicap accessible?
It would, it would be the same set of rules that they would have to meet under any kind of improving town, town projects. I would say that the money, the CPA money can be used for handicap accessibility improvements.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Seeing no more questions, we have recommendations from the Finance Committee.